We will go ahead and call this meeting to order, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Please stand and join us for the Pledgeable Agents. Okay, good morning, everyone. We do have a quorum present this morning with all five commissioners in attendance. Commissioners, if there are no questions or corrections on the agenda, I'd entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Commissioner Toman, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Richards, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Posnay? Motion's unanimous. First up under Tab A this morning, we've got three public hearings, excuse me, four, for the Planning and Zoning Department. First being Resolution twenty-five dash zero-three dash zero dash zero-one for the approval of a partial vacation of the Covered Wagon Park subdivision as requested by Stuart Grow, Jr. and Corner Property LC. With us this morning is Sweetwater County Land Use Director, Eric Bingham. Good morning, Eric.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to start off, we will have the Stuart Grow, it's the actual applicant is Stuart Grow, who owns the property, which he is also part of Corner Property LC. The purpose of this vacation is to establish a, is establish the Maverick subdivision. Anytime you, we have an old existing plat, the Covered Wagon subdivision, for those of the commissioners that don't, aren't aware of it. I'll show you a map of the, as you can see here, there, this is a subdivision that never got built back from the early eighties. The developers went bankrupt and then went through some court proceedings, which ended up doing some meets and bounds descriptions on top of it. Needless to say, it's a little bit of a mess, legal descriptions and such out there. And there's adjacent properties and lots owned by Jamestown Rio Vista and then owned by another company called Rofam to the east. So this is the first step in cleaning up this area that this was originally heard in January and was actually tabled at the Planning and Zoning Commission to get some issues dealt with, with Jamestown Rio Vista. And also with, there were some concerns with Project West also. Project West is bringing their water line through the north part, part of the property. So, once those issues started to get resolved, we rescheduled it and then we heard it last week. And, and here we are today. So all, all the hearings you're hearing today are related to the Maverick subdivision. But again, the first step in this is to vacate a portion of that. So, another thing is, is Mr. Grow has signed an MOU with the Jamestown Rio Vista to vacate the remaining parts of the subdivision to clean it up. So, very excited for this because it's been a long time. This has been through lawsuits, this has been, you know, throughout the years. Just glad to finally come to a point where we're cleaning up the area with legal descriptions and such. Very excited for that. So what you're seeing there, that area just roughly is where the area that we're vacating, where the new Maverick store will be at, which is directly across the street from Love's Truck Stop. So just to understand the location of that. And the purpose of this will to be to, to build a Maverick store and subdivide that area, so. In here, this is the, and you'll hear this later on, this is the actual Maverick subdivision. Just one lot, we are vacating several easements in there. This has gone through, we've notified all the utility companies. And everything is being vacated except that Westerly easement is going to remain. There's a petition letter to the Board of County Commissioners from the applicant. And Steph recommends approval of this recommend date of the resolution that you have. Twenty-five oh-three CCO-one. We do have conditions on there that is contingent upon the approval of Resolution twenty-five oh-three zero, zero-three for the Maverick Sweetwater subdivision plat and the twenty-five oh-three zero oh-two, the zone map amendment. And that the applicant will continue to collaborate with Project West to complete the water line pipeline easement across the Maverick subdivision, which concludes property owned by Stuart Grow and Rofam. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hear and did approve four to zero, the request. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Eric, appreciate the explanation. Any questions for staff on this resolution, commissioners? With none, we do need to open this up for a public hearing. So at this time, if there's anyone online or in the audience that would like to speak to this resolution, now would be the appropriate time. Seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve Resolution number twenty-five dash zero-three dash CC dash zero-one.
Do you have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five oh-three Z O O-one by Commissioner Slaughter? Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, before seconding, would it be more appropriate to amend that motion to include staff recommendations?
I would accept that.
And I would second.
Do you have a motion by Commissioner Slaughter? We've got a second by Commissioner Richards, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Posnay? Motion carries unanimously. Next under Tab A is item number two, we've got Resolution twenty-five oh-three Z O O-two for approval of a zoning map amendment from MH Manufactured Home and RR Rural Residential to Commercial as requested by Greg Day Hunt, Day Engineering. And at this time, we've got County Planner Cassidy Brown with us. Morning Cassidy.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Chair. So for, for this one, as, as Eric stated, this, all of our hearings today are going to be dealing with this property that will be owned by Maverick. And what we're looking to do again is to clean up what's, what's underlying there and just to make this a buildable lot for them, for them to construct the Maverick convenience store there. So, the current zoning is both MH Mobile Home and Rural Residential with a minimum lot size of five acres. And what is being proposed is that we will have it zoned solely as commercial for the Maverick subdivision. And as we can see too, this area is already heavily zoned for commercial use. We did post public notice for this proposal and going into our review criteria, staff finds that this amendment would be consistent and compatible with the current resolution and comprehensive plan. This cleans things up, makes it just more developable. And then the proposed zoning is suitable for the existing topography and creates buildable lots and staff finds that is the case there. In our third review criteria, just the proposed zoning is compatible with the existing or allowable uses of adjacent properties. And it definitely is, the, the zoning is largely commercial again in this area. And so this is a nice spot for this Maverick convenience store to be in, for the zoning to be commercial. The fourth is that the proposed zoning can demonstrate adequate public facilities and provisions for adequate facilities have been made through the subdivision process. And Eric can speak to that a little bit more when we hear the, the hearing for the final plat for the Maverick subdivision. The fifth is that the amendment shall not adversely affect adjacent properties, communities, health and safety and welfare of the residents of Sweetwater County and this amendment does not adversely affect adjacent properties. And it does conform with the twenty-fifteen zoning resolution as well. We received one, one comment from Ryan Reed, Senior Mining Engineer, stating that this property has no AML concerns with regard to abandoned historic mines. And with that, staff recommends approval of recommendation for the zone map amendment, or the resolution, I apologize, for this zone map amendment with the following conditions, just that the approval is contingent upon approval of the partial vacation of Covered Wagon subdivision and the approval of the Maverick Sweetwater subdivision. And when we met last week, the Planning and Zoning Commission did also vote and, and hear this and it also passed four to zero for recommending to be approved. And that is all I have on this one, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks Cassidy, appreciate that. Any questions for staff on this resolution, commissioners? Not, we also need to open this up to a public hearing. So at this time, if there's anyone online or in the audience that would like to speak to this resolution, now is the appropriate time. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you. My name is Todd Myers, I'm with Maverick Incorporated, one eighty-five South State Street, Solix City, Utah. The staff sent a, a great report, I don't know there's much that I can add to it. But, you know, as we look at that area, it's really not a residential area is how it's building out. It's building out more as a commercial between having the highway there and also the off-ramps for I-80. And so we think it makes a great sense for it to be zoned commercial and also for our use. And with that, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thanks, Mr. Myers, any questions for? Thanks very much. Anyone else that would like to speak to this resolution? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve recommendation number twenty-five, Resolution number twenty-five zero-three zero, zero dash zero-two with staff recommendations.
Do you have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five oh-three Z O O-two with staff recommendations by Commissioner Slaughter? Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Richards, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Posnay? Motion carries unanimously. Next under Tab A is going to be item number three, we've got Resolution twenty-five zero-three Z O zero-three for the approval of the Maverick Sweetwater subdivision final plat as requested by Stuart Elgro, Jr. and Corner Property LC slash Todd Myers with Maverick Incorporated. At this time, we'll hand it back to Land Use Director Bingham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so this is what we're here for and Mr. Myers is very excited. We're finally here, this has been quite the long process. So you would think it'd be simple with a single lot, but with that subdivision underneath, it's kind of turned into something else. So anyway, I appreciate Maverick's patience through the process. So property owner is Stuart Grow, again, and Corner Property. Todd Myers with Maverick is the applicant and very aware of the location. And then now the current zoning is going to be commercial. And so Jamestown Rio Vista will provide water. At this time, just explain kind of what's going on with the sewer line. As we know, that's a specific purpose tax item that was listed on there, was a sewer line. That's obviously not in right now, so might as well just bring this up right now. The subdivision improvements agreement normally is a year. We're looking at a two-year, which staff recommends just due to the timeliness of the potential of having that sewer line in in the next couple of years. Maverick would love, obviously like to see that sewer line go in so they can connect it. Same with Love's Truck Stop, obviously, with them hauling their sewer right now. So this extends that out, gives them that opportunity. There was an adverse recommendation from DQ on this. The reason for that is due to the soils in this location, they will have to put in an advanced septic system in if they, it's kind of the direction they're going right now. But the advanced septic system has to go in, in lieu of just a regular commercial system, so due to the soils. So that statement is on the plat. We won't, we will not have a plat today here to sign mylar nor a subdivision improvements agreement. We are working on that, there's some timing things that are going on with that, that I'll explain. We don't have concerns with it. The applicant technically has six months to record the plat by our regulations, so we're okay. Once we get that plat, mylar and all the things, items taken care of, Mr. Chairman, we'll bring that to you, get in contact with you for signature if this does get approved by the board today, so, and the improvements agreement. Okay. Again, here is the plat and the location. And with the vacation now, a lot of those easements have been removed, except for that one on the Westerly property line. Again, this is just for the Maverick subdivision, very straightforward subdivision. And access is going to be off Old Highway thirty. And it's been publicly noticed, AML had no concerns. And just an update too, so as far as, because this is Y-dot, this is the state highway, they have approved access to the, to this subdivision. There were some Public Works Director concerns, those have all been addressed. So, the drainage report is good enough and so that has gone through, so. Staff recommends approval of the request. And of course, it's contingent upon the partial vacation, the zoning map amendment. The drainage report again has been approved. And then final, financial assurance with a fully executed subdivision improvements agreement shall be submitted to Sweetwater County prior to the recordation of the final subdivision plat. And that was a four to zero vote in favor of approving the planning and zoning recommendation. And that's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman, and of course, Mr. Myers is here to answer any other questions you may have.
Thanks, Eric, any questions for staff on this resolution, commissioners?
I have one for you, Eric. For some reason, I was thinking it was on the other side of the interstate, so when I saw
Oh, okay.
this in the packet, I was like, oh, all right. Is it convenience store or is it a truck stop or both? Can you clarify that?
The convenience store, I mean, it's gonna be, Todd, maybe he could answer that question, but it's, it's very similar to what's on Foothill Boulevard. Yep, yeah, very similar to that.
I just know.
It's not going to be like long, like what we have at Love's where trucks are parking and.
And that was my only question, just because I know there was, I mean, that was before our time, but I remember the discussions about
Yeah, yeah.
traffic and
Yeah.
bottleneck in the interstate. So I was just curious if we were gonna have any issues there, but it sounds like it's a little more
Yeah.
on the convenience side. Any other questions for staff or the applicant?
All right, with that, we'll go ahead and open this up for a public hearing. If there's anyone online or in the audience that would like to speak to this resolution, now would be the appropriate time. Welcome back, Mr. Myers.
And thanks Commissioner again for hearing this application. As the director said, we do have Y-dot approval. And so there's going to be two accesses, they're going to line up with the Loves. The northern one is coming straight into our property. And then the, the one that is, I don't know if you'd call it south or east, it's probably more east. That one there will also, there'll be an access easement through that portion of our plat that will feed into the remaining surplus property. And we are, that access easement is wide enough that it will qualify for a county road in the future. And so that's, that's the plan. The county didn't want to have it be a road right now because it's only serving Maverick's interest at this point. And you don't have equipment and so forth out there to maintain it. So this is the approach that we've taken on that. With the Y-dot approvals, it also includes all of the improvements that we have to do to the D cell lanes and left-hand turning lanes to, you know, keep the highway functioning properly on that. So that's all been reviewed by their engineers.
Very good, appreciate that. Commissioner Toman?
I do have a question, Mr. Meyer. How many acres do you plan to pave out of that subdivision approximately? Because it's eight and a half acres, right, the total thing?
Yeah, offhand, I don't know what the, the number of that is. However, in the next application, you're gonna see, it's, it's the sign variance, but you're gonna see the site plan and you'll see what is going to be paved. We have more than enough land, mainly because we wanted to get where we'd be able to have that shared access too. And so it just makes a little bit easier for trucks to come in and off of the property. And so it's a little bit larger than normal. We do not consider ourselves truck stops, truck stops have overnight. They have lounges, they have showers, they have different things. It's really tailored to the truck drivers. The one thing about the additional property, there is property that if we ever needed to have additional parking for semis because of I-80 and weather, it's kind of been encouraged to look at that. Not only here, but various sites that we have on I-80.
Right, that's what's my concern with those trucks, yeah. The Foothill one is kind of tight and if you start putting a lot of trucks on this one, it could become congested.
This, this one's quite bigger and if you look close on that site plan, you'll see dashed lines of where the future could be if we did that. Maverick's kind of going back and forth, we, we're not a truck stop. Even though our parent company once owned Flying J, we don't want that to be Maverick.
I do have one more question, Mavericks were a Wyoming company out of Afton, so now are they still a Wyoming company or are they a Salt Lake company?
It moved to Salt Lake probably about ten years ago.
Okay.
Most of the corporate office had moved earlier, but we kept the, the core right there in Afton, but that has changed. I'm thinking ten years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Thanks, Mr. Myers. Still under the public hearing, if there's anyone else that would like to speak to this resolution. This time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve Resolution twenty-five dash zero-one dash Z zero dash zero-three subject to all staff recommendations.
Do you have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five oh-three Z O O-three with staff recommendations by Commissioner Slaughter? Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Toman.
I would second that.
Got a second by Commissioner Toman, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, you stated twenty-five dash zero-three, I believe it's actually twenty-five dash zero-one. And then Z zero dash zero-three. Just to.
My agenda says oh-three, I thought I was correcting you there. It's oh-three.
You you just stated 25-03, and I believe it's 25-01. That's what I have on in my packet. Is 25-01-Z0-03.
Oh, that's the that's the planning and zoning commission commissioner.
All right. I withdraw my concern then.
Mr. Chairman? It just looks like we have the wrong number on the document, but the right number on the agenda. So they're they'll correct the the documents. You were right, Mr. Chairman.
It is 03.
Oh, I see what you're looking at, Rob. Okay. Yeah. So the correct resolution should be 25-03-ZO-03.
I will then correct my motion, Mr. Chairman, to be 25-03-Z0-03.
Very good. We do have an amendment to the original motion. Do we have a second with that, Commissioner Toman? Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right? Pose nay? Motion's unanimous. Thanks for clarifying that, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, we'll get that corrected and get you a correct copy for signature.
Very good. That's going to move us right along to the fourth item under Tab A, which is Resolution 25-03-ZO-04 for approval of a zoning variance from Section 13F of the 2015 Sweetwater County zoning resolution as requested by Crystalin Williams on behalf of YESCO. And we'll hand it back to Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So for this hearing, we've got our property owners, still Stuart Elgro Jr., Corner Property, pending purchase by Maverick. And, you know, it's still that same piece of land that we've been looking at there. In in looking over the application for the signage for the Maverick convenience store, we realized that they would need a variance to be able to construct the sign that they were proposing. One of them was just outside of the regulations that we typically would have. So for the sorry, just one second there. So the per Section 13F of the Sweetwater County zoning regulation or zoning resolutions, the maximum height of a freestanding sign is 40 feet and maximum square footage is 300 square feet. The sign that we're hearing about today is proposed to be 125 feet tall and will have square footage of 1,272 feet. And they did, we do have some exhibits to kind of to look at to show you why that's necessary for them to have such a a large sign for this area. So Maverick, Clint Carver with Maverick, Inc. did send in a narrative for the variance request for us as well, just explaining that their reasoning for having this sign is based largely in public safety and being able to view the sign in time for travelers to make the decision to get off of the the road that they're traveling on and safely visit the Maverick store. And let's see. So I do have, this is the site plan that Mr. Myers was speaking about earlier. This is the where that proposed sign would be, that 125-foot sign. Just kind of off there. And for
It's not showing.
Oh, oh, no. There we go. Okay. So here, I'll I'll switch back just really quick. So this is that site plan and where the proposed sign will be here. And you can see this is, it looks like this is where yeah, that we've got the paved area here and then anywhere that could be for expansion as as Mr. Myers was speaking to there. And then here's some exhibits that were provided to us by YESCO so we can see what that sign potentially would look like. So here's just the the drawing of the sign that they provided to us. But they've also provided simulations so we can see, you know, what that would look like from from the interstate. So this is I-80 eastbound, and you can see the sign and just off there in the distance. And then this is I-80 westbound. You can see the Loves sign is there too. And then the Maverick one would be just over here. Important to note that Loves did also have to go through this process and obtain a variance for their signage as well. So we have posted for public notice. And we'll jump into the review criteria there. So as you saw in the picture, the topography of the land does make it difficult to see the signage from Maverick, especially on the that eastbound direction to to be able to see the signage there. And the high speeds are also a factor that lead us to feeling that the the variance is an appropriate proposal and that the reason that they need this variance is nothing to do with any any action from the applicant. And so as I've stated before, on the second criteria, sorry, there's we've staff feels that this variance will definitely benefit the welfare and safety of the community and that this adjustment is really the minimum adjustment that's necessary. Could could Maverick operate their convenience store without this large sign? Sure. But it's just not as safe for travelers, for them to not have that advanced notice. Our third review criteria is that granting of the variance is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning resolution. And staff feels that it is and definitely will not be injurious to the neighborhood or detrimental to public welfare. In fact, it would be an overall benefit to have the larger signage. Staff did not receive any public or agency comments on this proposal. And with that, staff recommends the approval of this resolution with the following conditions. First, that the owner of the property has signed the variance permit application. We were just waiting on this because everything has been so complicated between, you know, Stuart Elgro Jr. plus Corner Properties being owners and then Maverick pending purchase. So we're just waiting for everything to go through. Then Maverick will sign this, just to kind of simplify things. And then second, approval of the partial vacation of the covered wagon subdivision, the approval of the zoning map amendment, and approval of the Maverick-Sweetwater subdivision. And that is all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Cassidy. Appreciate the background with that. Any questions for staff on this resolution, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Richards?
Cassidy, I guess my only concern here is are we being consistent with the requirements that we we put on these tall structures? When when applicants have come in for cell towers, we've been expecting them to meet setbacks and provide us with fall zone information. So are we being consistent on that? Because I think the last tower we approved was 120 feet, and we did that with them. Are these engineered differently? Is there something else we should be considering here?
That that's a great question. Commissioner Richards, I'll I'll let Eric speak to that.
Each situation is different. So we have to analyze it differently. This will definitely meet any fall zone requirements. It's been engineered. They provide engineer drawings and such. But it just, we're going to have to look in and evaluate our both our sign regulations, and then we need to do it on cell towers. Just so we're just, we're a little bit more consistent across the board. It's just based on whatever they bring in. The issue here is, is that this is lower than actually Loves. I mean, this is a pretty low spot. And then when you're coming, especially when you're coming eastbound, very difficult to see. So, yeah, we're consistent as far as looking and evaluating as far as the requirements go. The height is a little bit different on this one compared to even the Loves. Loves is a little bit lower. But again, it's due to the fact that of their location. So, but yeah, we evaluate all those different same criteria that we do on all applications.
So the sign's not going to fall down on the interstate or anything.
No, it's far from that. Any additional questions for staff? Todd, would you need to open this one up for a public hearing? So at this time, if there's anyone online or in the audience that would like to speak to this variance resolution, now would be the appropriate time. Welcome back, Mr. Myers.
Thank you.
Got to give you an idea of the mechanics of when we're planning for a sign. You know, freeway sign, of course, we want it to be visible from the freeway. And with that, what we'll do is we'll take a crane, sheet of plywood. They'll raise that crane up. We drive up and down the interstate and we take a look to see whether it's, how high does it need to go to be visible? And also with that, as the planner mentioned, that it's also, it needs to be visible with enough reaction time to change lanes to exit the interstate. And so from the where they took those photos, that's what they were doing at that point. Now, you could say, well, we want always the biggest sign we can get. And there's there's quite a bit to that. But at the same time, there's a cost factor that goes into it. For every foot of height that we put on to that sign, we added $1,500, partly what you see up, but mostly underground for wind loads and so forth to, of course, help prevent the sign from falling over. But these signs are also, they're designed by YESCO, non-electric sign. And, you know, if we need to provide that fault data, we can definitely do so.
Very good. Thanks, Mr. Myers. Any questions, comments? Still under the public hearing portion, if there's anyone else that would like to speak to this resolution? Quick math, that's an expensive sign. Seeing no one else, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. And commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, we'll try this one more time. I would move to approve Resolution 25-03-Z0-04 for approval of the variance application for a freestanding sign with a height of 125 feet and a surface area of 1,272 square feet within commercial zoning from Section 13. F. Point two of the 2015 zoning resolution as requested by Crystalin Williams, YESCO, subject to Sweetwater County staff recommendations.
Very good. Thanks, Commissioner. We do have a motion to approve Resolution 2503-Z004 with staff recommendations by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Eric, and Cassidy as well.
Stand up to the Wyoming wind. It's going to be
That's going to move us right along into the county resident comments and concerns portion of the agenda, commissioners. At this time, if there's anyone online or in the audience that would like to address the governing body, now would be the appropriate time. And with none, we'll go ahead and close the county resident comments and concerns portion of the agenda. And it's going to move us right along into Tab B. Before you this morning on the consent agenda are nine items. And I would ask if there's any requests to remove any items off the consent agenda for further discussion. Hearing none, I guess I should read those. The first we have is the approval of the March 4th, 2025 minutes. Second is the approval of the county vouchers warrants and the expenditure approval listing along with the commissioner's report. Third is the approval of bonds. Fourth, the approval of monthly reports. Five, a request to restaff two vacancies in the Road and Bridge Department. Six, a request to restaff a vacant position in the custodial department. Seven, the application for the deposit of public funds. Eight is a request to ratify the scoping comments in the Bureau of Land Management Wyoming's 2025 third quarter competitive lease sale. And nine is a request to ratify the secretarial order of direction to review and revise the Rock Springs Resource Management Plan. And with that, commissioners, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion's unanimous. Move us right along into Commissioner comments. And Commissioner Richards, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, commissioners. First off, I want to take a moment to recognize the passing of Senator Alan Simpson last week. Senator was a large part of my inspiration to become involved in politics three decades ago. And while I didn't always agree with the positions that he took on every issue, one thing that he taught us was that it wasn't our differences that mattered. It was our common ground that brought us together. Politics is so often about highlighting what we disagree on, but good governance is about finding the things that we agree on. He taught me through example, and I strive to live up to every time that I sit at this dais not to enter the room with any preconceived notions, to keep my mind open and to make my decisions as a result of purposeful deliberation. So thank you for many life lessons, life lessons, Senator. Godspeed. On the fifth, I attended a meeting of the Housing Task Force, followed by a meeting with Mayor Mickelson to discuss future ideas for the SEDC. On the sixth, I attended an enterprise meeting at the hospital, followed by a meeting with Green River City Administrator administrator Clevinger to also discuss ideas for the SEDC. On the eighth, I attended the Sweetwater County Republican Party's elections at the college here in Green River. Congratulations to the new executive committee, which includes Chairman Tony Nemic, Vice Chairman Sherry Bushman, State Committee Man Stephen Allen, State Committee Woman Tamara Kendrick, Secretary Portia Wall, and Returning Treasurer Cindy Lane. I was not invited to the local Democratic Party elections, but I believe they have some new leadership as well, and I would be happy to relay those results if they share them. On the 12th, I attended the monthly airport meeting where, in addition to regular business, they approved their tentative funding requests to the funding partners. I'm happy to say that it should be considerably less than last year's request and even slightly less than the year before that. Their tentative request should come in at about 409,000 compared to their 2025 request of 1.34 million and their 2024 request of about 440,000. So so a little bit of good news on that front. Also, that day, I remotely attended the WCCA monthly update where we heard from Senator Brasso, as well as staffers for Senator Lummis and Representative Hagman. On the 13th, I attended the Rock Springs Chambers Membership Connection Luncheon at Senefei, where we heard the state of the city update from Mayor Mickelson. That afternoon, I attended the SEDC Advisory Board Meeting where I proposed a draft operating plan that would transition the current form of the SEDC as a county agency into a sustainable, resilient, member-driven, and primarily member-funded entity with a new focused model and mission. I have had discussions with some of you individually, as well as representatives from both cities about my vision going forward. And I believe we have made considerable progress in identifying what that future organization would look like and how to get there. In the meantime, the board is reviewing the draft proposal while we wait for the final written report from Insight, whose suggestions spurred this change and will likely be heavily incorporated into what comes out at the other end of the transition. As you know, the current MOU that provides the partnership structure and funding for the SEDC expires on June 30th, unless all three partners agree to extend it for another year. I am committed to either being well on our way to having a succession plan for the organization by then or to recommend that we let the agreement expire. There really is no in-between for me, and I'll keep all keep you all informed of how we progress. On the 14th, I attended the breakfast in Lincoln County with area legislators, local government officials, and Representative Hagman. And on the 15th, I attended the stakeholders' breakfast at the Events Complex with Representative Hagman to take part in a discussion with her about the status of the RMP. That breakfast included primarily people who were directly involved in the RMP process, cooperators and stakeholders, as well as some of the participants in the governor's RMP task force. Both, I felt, were very productive meetings. Later that day, I also attended the town hall meeting that Congresswoman that the Congresswoman hosted. So I could also hear what concerns area residents have. I just want to thank Representative Hagman on her willingness to come to Sweetwater County and engage in meaningful conversations with legislators, local elected officials, regional stakeholders, and most importantly, her constituents. I think it is both sad and unfortunate that a small but very loud minority chose to try to deride her attempts at meaningful engagement. And I commend her on her professionalism and how she handled the protesters. And I commend her on her professionalism and how she handled the protesters. I was disappointed that the press chose to completely focus on the loud minority and really kind of ignored the fact that most of the people in the room were there to have a reasonable conversation and acted with both support and respect. In almost every case, her statements and her answers were met with overwhelming accolade, yet only the instances where protesters interrupted or jeered at or seemed to get coverage. I would like, I would like to remind people that there are time, place, and manner restrictions on the First Amendment rights to petition their government. It doesn't give you the unlimited right to disrupt or interfere with either official or unofficial proceedings and to prevent others from having their voices heard. Congresswoman was more than gracious in allowing it to continue. And though she had every right to kick the people out who continued to disrupt her town hall, I believe she made a conscious decision not to though, and to allow it to continue because she wanted everyone to see what kind of people they and their leader really were. What I saw was an organized group of donkeys. I'd call them jackasses, but that'd probably be inappropriate, so I'll just go with donkeys, that were waving flags supporting Mexico, Ukraine, and Canada, and spewing ad hominem attacks against the President and his cabinet with hardly a single legitimate policy statement or American flag in the bunch. That doesn't describe all of them, but it does describe most of the protesters. I will give credit, though. Some stood respectfully with their signs, and I thank those who engaged in legitimate political dissent in the proper way, while not interfering with the ability of others to engage meaningfully with their elected officials. Sadly, I believe there's a lot of misinformation out there somewhere and a severe lack of general knowledge about what the responsibilities of different levels of government are. We saw that at the Town Hall where the Congresswoman was jeered over executive branch actions. We saw that during the tunnel crisis when a lot of complaints were made about how it was handled by the state, but made to branches of government that weren't directly involved in the response. And we saw it over the weekend when one of our local legislators complained about not being invited to every single meeting involving local and federal officials and just not understanding, worse even refusing to understand the differing roles that elected officials fill. We all share constituents and we all serve them to the best of our ability, but in many different capacities. Sometimes those capacities overlap, sometimes they don't. For example, state legislators do not have legal cooperator status in federal, federal land use planning. They simply don't get a seat at that table. It is primarily reserved for executive level government branches. One of my jobs as a Commissioner is to continually learn where those differentiations exist. And if folks out there have questions about those delineations, I am happy to share what I've learned. I'm rambling now, so I get back on topic. Going forward, tomorrow I have a Housing Task Force meeting, followed by a Greater Sage grouse Planning Meeting. On the 26th, I'll attend both a workshop for the Southwest Counseling Board as well as their regular monthly meeting. And that's all I have on my schedule so far, before we come back here on April Fool's Day for our next meeting. But I'm sure I'll get plenty of calendar surprises between now and then, as we always do. In the meantime, it looks like it's my turn to buy lunch today, and we might even get out of here in time for that. That's all I have for you today, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any questions or comments for Commissioner Richards' report? Not, Commissioner Jones, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the fourth, I attended the Memorial Hospital Sweetwater County Finance and Audit Committee Meeting. Hospital had a very slight gain in February, but gain is always good. The financial pillar of the hospital strategic plan was discussed regarding topics such as days cash on hand, gross days in AR, aging AR, and insurance reimbursements amongst others. On the fifth, I attended the hospital monthly board meeting. Capital was discussed, and we're gonna have a presentation on a little bit of that later on, so I won't drag that one out. Incident command was also discussed during the meeting regarding the tunnel disaster and how well everybody really handled that situation. And they've practiced and practiced and practiced for these types of situations. There's no way to practice for every situation, but they have practiced to be prepared for something like this. So they handled it cool heads, great minds, and great people. On the sixth, I attended the Chamber Enterprise Meeting along with Commissioner Richards. That was regarding the potential for a statewide Chamber of Commerce, so we'll see how, where that goes. On the seventh, I was fortunate enough to enjoy the snow, which not everybody enjoys like I do, but I did, and I was able to ride my snow machine to work. So that was kind of a highlight. Doesn't get, don't get to do that every day. Also, the American Council Snowmobile Association's posted it on their newsletter, so I guess I got my 15 minutes of fame. On the weekend of the eighth through the 10th, I attended the Wyoming State Snowmobile Association for a weekend of fundraising, fun, and meetings. It's our annual convention that moves around the state. We had it here three years ago. So we had it again this year. It's what we call Fun Days. That's what we call the convention. Friday night was registration dinner and a pub crawl where we all rode on a bus to support some of our sponsors. Saturday was a side-by-side ride that went south out of Rock Springs, kind of made a big loop and ended up in Green River for lunch and then back home. Saturday night is the banquet and fundraiser. I don't have the exact numbers, so I can't give you that amount, but we, appears we raised about $55,000 Saturday night. I know I mentioned that the schnapps bottle auction three years ago when we did this, which raises money for scholarships and an access fund. The auction raised about $36,000 for the schnapps bottle. Of that, we used 20,000 for scholarships and put the rest either in savings or in an account for access to public lands. Just a reminder that schnapps bottle auction is kind of fun. We auctioned it off and you can bid as high as you want, but whatever your highest bid is, you pay whether you get the bottle or not. Typically, clubs get together and, and come in with the big money, so individuals don't typically get it. But it's, it's a great deal, and that's how we ended up raising so much money for it. The bottle gets the club name etched in it and has to come back next year, so nobody gets to drink it. It just gets to sit on somebody's desk for a year, and then we take it back for another auction the following year. The scholarships we awarded, the highest was for $4,000, and they worked their way down to 1,250. Since 2009, we've given 155 scholarships and awarded over a quarter of a million dollars. Highlight for me that evening was being awarded the Ron McKinney Trail Stewardship Award. This is the kind of the highest award given in our state and our little world of snow machining. It was given to me for over 20 years of dedication towards our sport. And the man it's named after was a very good friend who passed away five years ago, so that made it a little bit more special for me. I would like to thank all of our sponsors for helping to make this such a successful weekend. On the 12th, I too attended the Wyoming County Commission Association Monthly Meeting. Commissioner Richards pretty much covered that one, so I will move on. On the 13th, attended the Chamber Luncheon. Want to thank Mayor Mickelson for his state of the city speech. On the 15th, I attended the meeting in the morning with Representative Hagman regarding the BLM RMP. Again, I think Commissioner Richards mentioned that it was mostly attended by the folks who worked so hard on the RMP locally and who have standing. I do really appreciate her taking a little time and sitting down with us face to face. It appears we may now have a direction to move in, which is kind of what we've been trying to, trying to find. But again, want to thank her for her frank conversations with us. In the afternoon of the 15th, I too attended the Town Hall. I can't really add much to what Commissioner Richards said, so I won't try, but I do want to thank Representative Hagman for coming to Sweetwater County and putting up with less than professional and mature treatment. There's no reason to treat anybody like that, so it was very, very much an embarrassment for Sweetwater County, and I, I hope she will come back and see us again. This may seem like somewhat of a short report, but I did spend considerable time talking about the RMP with a variety of people, and so I'll leave it there and stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any comments or questions for Commissioner Jones?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards?
Mr. Jones, I'm not sure snowmobilers know what an auction is. Or how that works. It seems to raise a lot of money, but nobody gets to drink it. Everybody has to pay for it. It's not like an auction.
Seems like everyone should get at least one taste of it.
Nope, nobody does. You have to bring it back. So it is kind of a, a unique situation that was started, I can't remember now, 1996, I think it was started, and they were trying to figure out a way to start a scholarship program. So one of the members walked into the bar and bought a bottle of schnapps. He said, here's how we're gonna do it, and it's been that way ever since. So kind of a, maybe we're not very good at auctions.
I'd hate to be the one that drops the bottle.
Comments? Well, congrats on your award, Commissioner. Looks like I'm up next, just kind of winging it again today. I've had a handful of meetings since we last met. Had the mayor and commissioners luncheon with Rock Springs Chamber. Mayor Mickelson was absent for that, but had some good discussions with the city of Green River. Nothing of anything to really report on, just kind of touching base and discussing some of the upcoming budget constraints and things along those lines. Also attended Mayor Mickelson's state of the city address last week. I've had a couple different discussions with members from Castle Rock Hospital District that have expressed an interest to be a part of the EMS district conversations and have shown encouragement for that. So over the course of the next couple of weeks, I'll be reaching out to likely both cities as well as representatives from Castle Rock to, I guess, start looking into the feasibility of that. We are just past the halfway point of our contract with Castle Rock Hospital, or Castle Rock Ambulance, but obviously with Castle Rock Hospital District. So time is marching on, and if we're gonna do something there, we probably need to get those conversations rolling. I also attended the GOP elections and appreciated those stepping up to serve in such positions. Congratulations to all of the new leadership members. Wanted to share, because I forgot last time, that Public Works has been quite busy, particularly with the construction projects, the library, Southwest Counseling, the Public Works Combined Facility, the Detention Center Rooftop Unit Project. All of those are well on their way. And collectively across the departments, facilities is dealing with 10 construction or remodel projects that they're overseeing, both between us and the component units. Parks and Rec has eight projects and then upgrades on their plate for this year, or for the remainder of this year, I should say, fiscal year. Road and Bridge has 12 that they're working on, anything from culverts to road reclaim, traffic counts, et cetera. Engineering's working on nine in-house projects. And they've also contracted or consulted out three of those. So busy times in Public Works, but things are progressing as normal there. We've had a couple maintenance issues. There was a water line break up at the old C Street Building, and we had some vandalism out at the trap clubs. So we're working our way through those and hope that that doesn't continue. I unfortunately had to miss Representative Hagman in her town meetings and halls that she had. I was out of town, unfortunately, so I appreciate those of you who were able to attend that. Sounds like the afternoon Town Hall was certainly interesting, as I read about online, but I'll save any comments from that since I wasn't there. Yesterday, I had the Sweetwater County Water Users Coalition Meeting. Pretty short agenda there, but I did want to share that there was some, I guess, disappointment in, I believe it was House Bill 117 at the legislature this year, which basically eliminated any funding for cloud seeding. And the idea behind that is obviously on down years or drought years, like we continually face, that we're not able to meet the minimum seven and a half million acre feet allotment. And so cloud seeding helps with that effort. On average, it was shared that it's anywhere between six and 14,000 acre feet a year. In our area, which is basically a ground-based operation or ground-based generator up in the Wind River Range, the average is about 10,000 acre feet, which doesn't sound like a whole lot when you compare that to seven and a half million, but nonetheless, it's an effort to prevent and address the curtailment. And so some felt as though that was pretty unfortunate, especially because the lower Colorado River users pay two-thirds of that amount. So the upper, which is obviously us, only pays a third of that amount. And so now the question is, does it just discontinue? And there's a lot of work that went into permitting and everything else that comes along with that. The state has funded that, and it was around $500,000. And so I guess there's concerns, not only from the Water Board, but certainly the industry and the power plant and, you know, some of the overall users, because ultimately what happens when you strip funding is that's passed along to the end result users. So we'll continue to look at that. It sounds like there's gonna be some outreach from the state and the Wyoming Water Development Office to see what that may look like as far as trying to keep it going. So that was the bulk of that. There is a Fontanelle Working Group meeting on April 16th. There's one, I believe, the day before for the Flaming Gorge as well, which will kind of give the outlook for water releases heading into the spring and summer season. Aside from that, I believe that's all I have. Pretty short meeting. I am gearing up for budget. I've had a lot of discussions with outside entities and some internal departments, kind of questioning the, the direction and where we're heading, what the outlook is. Still a little bit premature to dive into that, but I'm anxious to get it started. Usually April, May, and June are some brutal meetings and some lengthy ones at that, but I think it's gonna be challenging this year to see how evaluations down, some of the cuts from the state are obviously hitting us, and we'll see how we come out of it. But I'm eager to get started on that process and set the pace for fiscal year 26. So at this time, I'd stand for any questions. None, Commissioner Slaughter, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the seventh, I spent the morning preparing for the Monday meeting of the Specific Purpose Tax Joint Powers Board. I had a prior commitment in Salt Lake City for the meeting on Monday. I wanted to make sure that everything was ready for Vice Chair Mayor Mickelson to conduct the meeting. I was able to coordinate with Joint Powers Board Administrative Assistant Allison Valsik and prepare all necessary documentation for approval at the meeting. I subsequently touched base with Mayor Mickelson, and he informed me that the meeting went well and that all requisitions were approved and signed. On the 10th, I missed the regular meeting of the Star Transit Board, but I did reach out to Director Pacheco to see if there was anything he felt was of immediate importance that we needed to discuss. He assured me that there was nothing needing my attention and that we could meet later and that he would fill me in. I will try and connect with him later this week. On the 12th, I attended the regular meeting of the Sweetwater County Planning and Zoning Commission. The zoning amendments that we approved earlier this morning for Maverick Subdivision were discussed and approved by the board. After the amendments for Maverick were discussed, Next Era Energy gave an update on their progress for the Jackalope Wind Project. Glenn Schobert of Next Era explained the latest developments with a PowerPoint presentation and answered questions posed by the board. After the PNC meeting, Trystine Paefer, Community Engagement Manager for Next Era, requested a meeting with me. She wanted to touch base further with the commission and renew the principle that Next Era is very interested in working with Sweetwater County and was looking for better ways of engaging the community as the project moves forward. We had a good discussion, and I assured her that I would communicate her concerns with the other commissioners. That evening, I attended the regular monthly meeting of the County Museum Board. The board was very interested in the financial picture of the county moving into budget season. I shared the latest information that we had received from Assessor Devis that morning. They are in the process of trying to hire a new person to replace Aiden Brady, the former public engagement coordinator at the museum. The board is trying to determine if it would be more appropriate to wait for better information on financial assistance from the county for fiscal year 26 prior to making an offer of employment. The board scheduled a workshop for the morning of April 3rd to further discuss this. I plan to attend. The board is also looking for alternatives for their storage building and would like to have a discussion with the commission to evaluate options. I suggested, suggested that they make an appointment for one of our regular commission meetings. On the 14th, I participated in a planning meeting for the Congressional Tour. We continue to refine the schedule of events and timing involved for each of the counties involved. I informed the group that we had encountered a hiccup on the scheduling of the mine tours. With the sale of Genesis Alkali, the approval of our request fell through the cracks. I have since contacted representatives of Shishi Jam and We Sode directly and have renewed our request. They are working to ensure that they will be able to provide the tours we had previously requested. I've been in contact with the other entities that will be instrumental in guaranteeing an informational and entertaining tour for the DC staffers. I will be meeting with Tony and Jen Valdez at Buckboard tomorrow to discuss some of their ideas for the dinner that they have planned for the evening of the tour. Friday, I'll be meeting with the other members of our local committee to iron out further details for our participation. On the 15th, I attended the breakfast with Representative Hagman. It was It was good to get her advice for support on our further action on the Rock Springs RMP. It's very impressive that she takes the time to meet with her constituents on a regular basis, fulfilling her campaign promise to do so. I was unable to attend the town hall meeting later, later that afternoon, but I did view the coverage of the meeting. I thought it was disgraceful to see the lack of respect shown for one of our state's highest ranking elected officials. While it's everyone's right to disagree with policy or ideals, I find it repulsive that people refuse to acknowledge respect for one another. I would really expect more from, would really expect more decorum here in Sweetwater County. On the 17th, I spent the afternoon preparing for this meeting and organizing my calendar for the rest of the month. I was also able to schedule meetings with Land Use Director Bingham and Deputy County Attorney DeLeon to discuss other upcoming issues. This morning, I had a discussion with Land Use Director Bingham regarding the ongoing WSA issue here in the county. In 2018, a prior county commission sent a letter to US Representative Liz Cheney asking for full release of the WSAs, including those shared by other counties. Our, in our meeting with Representative Hagman Saturday, she indicated she would be willing to push forth issues that are beneficial to the county. As such, Eric and I will be working with John DeLeon to prepare a resolution asking for action by Congress to be discussed at our next commission meeting. Last week, I was also approached by members of the Rock Springs Grazing Association. After a brief discussion with them, I suggested that the commission will reach out to them to schedule a meeting in which we can work together toward resolution of mutual concerns. Mr. Chairman, with that, I would conclude my comments and be glad to stand for any other questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any questions for Commissioner Slaughter's report? We will touch base on that meeting, Commissioner, and try and get something in the works. Appreciate the report. Commissioner Toman, I know you're freshly back from DC and you've got about 17 pages to report on. So the floor is happily yours.
Thank you. I'm trying to boil it down so I'm not up here all morning. March 5th, I returned from Washington DC and tried to recover in the next couple of days. March 8th, I did attend the Sweetwater County GOP Annual Meeting and Election of Officers. Thank you to the previous officers for a great job and congratulations to the new officers. March 11th, I was on a Zoom call. Wow, I have power. I can stop the recording. You want me to keep talking or are you going to try to get it going? Is it on? Okay, on March 11th, I was on a Zoom call with Pat Anderson and Emma. I don't have her last name. He is on the Coordination Committee, works for USGS, but he's on the coordination team for the Wyoming Landscape Conservation Initiative, of which I'm on the executive committee as an alternate for that. And I've been on that since the beginning of time, 17 years ago. Anyway, they wanted to do an article, Ruckus House wanted to do an article about projects on the checkerboard. So we discussed that, but we also discussed possibility of USGS working to help identify rare earth minerals and a national coal reserve. And we followed this up with Representative Hagaman. These were also discussions I had in DC with the Department of Interior and the BLM. March 13th, I had a special meeting with the leaders of Next Era regarding the Jackalope Wind Project. And I guess I will leave it at that as others have reported on it. It was very interesting, I must say. March 13th, I attended the Rock Springs Chamber of Commerce meeting with the mayor's State of the City address. Thank you, Mayor Mickelson. March 15th, I attended the breakfast for discussions on the Rock Springs RMP with Representative Harriet Hagman. And I think we have some proposed actions that we can take based on those discussions. She's willing to push forth a bill asking USGS to identify a national coal reserve, which would be beyond, above and beyond what the BLM does with their reasonable foreseeable development scenario where they identify only what exists. This would be an actual assessment of what exists for our coal reserve in the nation. March 17th, last night, I attended the library board meeting. They adopted a meeting room policy at the last meeting and they're working on a code of conduct currently. Might be timely. They are moving forward with construction upgrades at all three library meeting rooms. A director has been hired for the Fine Arts Center. They are doing outreach for the Read Across America Week, and they will submit a budget request of 185,000 for parking lot work, in addition to their budget, I must say. Okay, the follow-up to the Washington DC trip, as I mentioned earlier, we attend, went to 10 agencies in two days. And so I just tried to hit the highlights. I've given the commissioners a copy of the itinerary and the talking points that we discussed at each of those meetings. I don't want to be here all day. So I will say that Thursday, the 27th, we spent all morning visiting our congressional delegation. WCCA, the Wyoming County Commission Association, if you saw it on Facebook, they presented a bullwhip in a frame to Senator Barasso for his role as Senate Whip. And he was quite proud of that, marching up and down the halls with his whip and showing everyone what we had given him. We, of course, talked about the BLM RMP with all of them. And we talked about the Wilderness Study Area because the WCCA is asking for a bill through Barasso and Lummis, I believe, to release the WSAs, but ours were not included in their project. So I think it's timely that Slaughter and the rest of the commissioners, they're always ahead of the ball. So I'm really proud of all of you. You're always on top of the issues. And before I can even get them out of my mouth, you've already taken care of them. So that is, that's exciting that I think it's timely that we send that letter to all of our congressional delegations so that ours, our 13 wilderness study areas can be properly released or pushed forward. So they're not in limbo and treated as wilderness areas when they're not. I attended the NACO Public Land Steering Committee. And you get a placard and the whole business. They did, they had a lot of discussion about the Secure Rural Schools. That's the funding from forest projects in lieu of tax. They're really concerned that program might disappear and they were really fighting to keep that in place. It's similar to our, the payment in lieu of taxes, but this is from forest projects. They are promoting resolutions to stop single species management and using a more holistic approach on management of federal lands. They're asking to stop funding NGOs from suing and settling. So that's kind of a summary of the NACO Public Land Steering Committee. Okay, on the afternoon of Thursday, the 27th, we tromped five miles back and forth across the mall from one office to the other. And they're talking about the Doge movement. When you see at least five buildings for the Department of Interior and at least four buildings for the Forest Service, I think they could start doing some of their cuts at the national level. For the life of me, I cannot see why they need to have that many buildings. But the cab drivers did say that the city has come alive. It was booming, zooming, and they said it was because all the workers had to come back to work. So Washington DC is alive and well at the moment. Okay, in the afternoon, we went to the Forest Service Office. We met with Randy Moore, the outgoing chief, and we also met the new incoming chief, Tom, oh dear, what's his name? Tom, Tom Schultz. He's a University of Wyoming graduate working in Idaho at the current time. And that was his first day on the job. So we, we met with him and he has interest in logging and in getting the Forest Service back to managing according to what it was designed to be managed for. I advocated for coal and trona in all, all of the offices that we went for, asked for the release of the Wilderness Study Areas. And I also supported the 13 other commissioners who were doing this tour. And the tour was arranged by Campbell and Converse County. So I think we owe a special thanks to them because we went in two days early so that we could visit with all of these entities that they had set up meetings with. The Forest Service has stopped the National Old Growth Rule that we were participating in as cooperators, even though the, they'd already written all the rule. They kept having meetings trying to get us to get on board with them. And so they, that, they assured us that is no longer in play because we have individual forest plans that are more specific to the needs of individual forests. We don't need a national program that tries to make one size fit all. They're doing a gap analysis on their staff and they're working to reshape the Forest Service. So those were all exciting, exciting things to hear. Let's see, I'm sure I'll forget something. Okay, okay, that afternoon, we went to the USDA Rural Development. Did not have a meeting with Department of Transportation. Oh, that evening, we had a congressional tour reception for the people who have been on the congressional tours and some new candidates who want to come next year. Connor from Hagaman's office was there and he's really excited to get to come on the tour next summer to find out what happens out West. He's a new staffer, but he's also the one working directly with Hagman on the Rock Springs RMP. On Friday, we went to USDA Natural Resources and Environment Meeting. 10:30, we went to the Department of Interior. I hand-delivered our letter that we had sent to Director Archuleta regarding the BLM RMP. Even though we had sent it ahead of time, none of the offices act like they'd ever seen it before. So it was good to be able to hand-deliver it to them again, saying these are the concerns we have that Eric and Danielle and John DeLeon put forth. They assured me that our state director for the BLM will be getting some direction from DC and they are looking for ways to work through the Rock Springs RMP to make it follow the multiple use mandate better and to follow the president's initiatives. In the afternoon, we went to the Department of Energy on nuclear energy. That one was exciting and maybe I can bring some slides next time because it was actually a sales pitch asking Wyoming to be a natural, a national repository for the uranium, the nuclear fuel canisters. So I guess there is a site at Elk Mountain in Nevada, but they're not being receptive to the idea. They promised us we could get a $40 million economic development boom if we accepted the charge. And of course, none of us jumped up to do it, but they were, they definitely gave us an interesting sales pitch and they assured us that they would come to our county and, and convince all, and ensure all of our residents that it is totally safe. So we passed around the canister and it was very enlightening. So I don't know where that's going to go, but they were definitely giving us a sales pitch. Then that afternoon at 2 o'clock, we went to the BLM and kind of repeated some of the conversations that we'd had on the RMP with Rock Springs and Buffalo, again, asking for the National Coal Reserve, identification of that reserve of coal. And the sage grouse plan was discussed, the Wilderness Study Areas were discussed. I talked about Wyoming Landscape Conservation Initiative and how that partnership has been able to provide projects on the ground. Talked about our coalition of local governments and need to forward that copy of that letter, which also outlines the proposed changes for the Rock Springs RMP. Then at 3:30, we met with the Environmental Protection Agency and the new director, which I cannot pronounce his name, sorry. But they have assured us in all of these agencies that they are more interested in looking to be more locally involved with the state and people on the ground. So I felt that was a positive message coming out of all the meetings that we attended. So I'll conclude my comments for the time being unless I think of more to bring you next time. On the DC trip, it was well worth my time, I felt, to be there to be able to hand-present those letters, if nothing else. Even though we'd sent them ahead of time, they didn't act like they had seen them. Okay, our April 1st meeting is to be with our federal partners and their annual update to us. BLM said they could come that day. The Cisskini National Refuge has said they could come. The Bureau of Rec says because of restrictions from DC, they can't come. So they've gotten a little terse email from me saying that it's vital that we have an update from them when we offer a Zoom option. So I hope, Rick Baxter, that you're listening in, that you are at our next meeting is all I can say on that. Upcoming Sage Grouse Cooperative meetings this week, CLG, our coalition next week, and Golden Hour next week. May 20th, mark your calendars, commissioners. Golden Hour is excited to have lunch with the commissioners. So we will break at 11:30 to go to Golden Hour and I shall buy lunch because I can afford that lunch for all of you. 2025 NACO Western Interstate Regional Conference will be May 20th and 23rd in Rapid City, South Dakota. And I would recommend that some of our commissioners maybe try to attend that. And then I got on my horse and rode in the 30-degree, 30 mile an hour wind for two days and I'm still alive. It's amazing. And my niece, I'm not going to let her bring the pictures and show these commissioners how handsome I looked. So that concludes my speech.
Very well. Thanks for your report, Commissioner Toman. Any questions or comments for Commissioner Toman? Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Toman, which federal agency did you said, say couldn't attend? I missed which one.
Bureau of Rec.
Bureau of Rec.
That deals with the dams and the water. Rick Baxter out of Provo.
I was going to say, because we haven't seen them at our regular federal partners meetings. And lately, we haven't seen BLM at our federal partners.
If I do not get a response here in a day or two, I will call him. And if I don't get a response then, I will be calling congressional delegation because there is no reason they should not be reporting to us. Washington is not the excuse. I'm sorry.
I think it's just worth noting, we have these federal partners meetings every month and the idea is so we can have good conversations with those partners. We've, we've really tried to make them non-combative, all information. But it's disappointing that the BLM chooses not to participate in.
Bureau of Rec, not the BLM. BLM said they.
BLM hasn't been coming recently either, but, but you're right, Bureau of Rec hasn't been coming to those meetings either.
Mr. Baxter did respond yesterday and ask for a link. So I believe the effort's going to be to try and attend via Zoom.
Thank you. Okay, I didn't see the email, so thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No questions, but just a thank you, Commissioner Toman, for making that trip to DC and spending so much time in all those meetings. Those face-to-face meetings are invaluable and handing them a letter, sitting down, having conversations with them, you just can't put a price on it. And we don't get to do it very often, so we have to take advantage of that when we can. I know there was a little bit of a push in the legislature to prevent us from joining any associations or any groups that could assist us or help us or move us forward. And I think your trip is, is a perfect example of how valuable it is to, to have folks in our corner and folks helping us and guiding us. You don't just show up to Washington DC and everybody's waiting to meet with you. So the help that we get is, is worth every penny we spend, but thank you for your time.
Well, you've spent the time there too, and I'm just so proud to be a part of this commission that's so active, proactive, and we have such a great staff. Thank you to all of you. It's just, thank you.
Well said. Any additional comments or questions for Commissioner Toman? Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate your work and time spent out there advocating.
Mr. Chairman, I did forget one thing and it affects, I always do that.
Always.
Urban renewal, they are going to push for releases of federal lands for housing to allow expansion of the energy programs. So I thought you'd be interested in that. I have more I can share with you. Thanks. I promise that's the end.
No problem. That does conclude the Commissioner comments portion of the agenda. Commissioners, before we move into Tab C, Gary, I believe has some staff he would like to introduce. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. I thought I'd use the opportunity and I appreciate a few moments to introduce a new member of my staff. This is Alex Moneyhan, started the first of this month. I'm excited to have her. She came from Western Wyoming Community College and the HR office up there. And so we're getting her up to speed and look forward to having her present some items in front of you in the near future. And if you get some time, please stop in and say hello as we get her oriented to the multiple facets of the job and all of the resources. I think it was beneficial to listen to your reports this morning also, which addresses the breadth of the task that we're, we're all confronted with. So I appreciate the opportunity to introduce her and look forward to working with you in the days to come.
Very good. Welcome aboard, Alex.
Oh, you'll be seeing me. I'll be waiting for help.
Just keep a cup of coffee for her.
Yes.
Have a big, big speech prepared or anything?
Yeah, that's right. It starts with four score and seven years ago.
Keep them honest down there.
Thank you again.
Appreciate it. That's going to move us right along into Tab C, which is the action and presentation items. Item number one is the Treatment Court of Sweetwater County. We received a letter in the packet from the Honorable Judge John Procos. I believe he's joining us from afar online this morning. Judge, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you see me?
Yes, sir. The floor is yours.
All right. Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's good to see so many old faces. And spent a lot of time in that hearing room, so it's always fun to be back. I think Mr. Aramosbi's in the gallery today. I'll keep it relatively short and sweet at this point. Treatment Court's been here with us in Sweetwater County, going on 20 years now. And as my letter explained, how we got to the form we actually are in is lost to history in some respects. But basically now, what we do is we function as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and we have a board, all volunteers, and we are funded annually by a grant. And now that grant comes through and is controlled by the Wyoming Supreme Court as a result of some substantial changes that were made to the statutes that went in. And that was two years ago. And the statutes that transferred management of the financial piece and a lot of the oversight to the Supreme Court all went into effect July 1 of 2024. Our budget is $262,000 and change. That's pretty much the grant that we get. We're here making the request at the present time because what we've seen develop probably in the last two years is that it is becoming, how shall we put it? A more significant responsibility to the board to manage the day-to-day affairs of the Treatment Court program. So for example, our current Coordinator, Kayla Cappers, and other coordinators, you know, have responsibilities that, for example, that become a little bit logistically difficult. So we need bills paid. They have to literally get in their car and hunt up board members, have checks signed. We have to have this audit every year that costs us $10,000 to $12,000. We have bookkeeping fees we pay every year. We believe and do feel that, for example, if the county would essentially become the entity that is the aegis over Treatment Court, we can do away with some of these extraneous expenses. The bookkeeping, the audit would go away, and it would just allow for a cleaner operation, if you will. And honestly, a better interface with the rest of the agencies because we'd have a clear line of command and control in terms of who actually oversees the Treatment Court Coordinator. The way the statutes are set up, I do not actually have any power to directly manage the person who is in charge of Treatment Court, and it's never been that way. And we would like the board to consider this. We feel it would be about as close to a budget-neutral situation as we could get with the grant money that funds the program. And this is how the majority of the treatment courts across the state actually function. If we went this route, we would probably have something akin to a management committee. We would need to enter into an MOU with the county to explain everyone's roles. We have examples of those that we've gotten from Campbell County. We wouldn't be reinventing the wheel here. And I guess if Mr. Aramosbi had anything he wanted to chime in on, I'd invite him. Or you have questions for me, I'll do my best today. But at a minimum, Commissioners, I was hoping not so much that you would make an immediate decision today to do this, but if you'd at least give us the green light to sit down with others like Mr. McLean and walk through the financial nuts and bolts and actually how it would all fit together, that would be great. And if we could explore this over the next several months, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Judge. Appreciate that. Appreciate the letter, kind of explaining the, I guess, desired direction moving forward. I was hopeful that was kind of your thoughts, is just kind of getting a blessing today to explore what this may look like. Should we choose to go that direction? Because obviously, we're going to have some questions on exactly what that looks like. So I would open it up for any questions or comments at this time, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
I guess I'm all for this, assuming that the funding makes sense. I sure as heck don't want to take on another responsibility that costs the county a lot more money without knowing what we're getting into. So some questions I'd like answered as this gets explored further. Would we be able to continue to expect the municipalities to partner with the funding? What are the HR costs of bringing this under the county? And would this be the coordinator position, would that be a contract position or a regular county employee? So those are the kinds of things I'd like to see answered. Hello, Your Honor. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Yeah, and I think perhaps moving forward with kind of trying to identify what this might look like. You know, I don't know if that changes anything, you know, with the grant coming down from the Supreme Court, if it goes from a nonprofit. It sounds like probably not, if there's other, I think you said there's 15 throughout the state, and 13 of those are currently under the county. But it sounds like, you know, you've got an example through Campbell County that we can kind of piggyback off and explore. So, you know, I'm open to seeing what that may look like. Commissioner Slaughter?
Mr. Chairman, I too have some of the similar concerns that have been expressed, but I would be more than happy to move forward and see what we can come up with with respect to this. So I would think that it would be a benefit to us to look into it anyway.
I would like to hear what Mr. Aramosbi has because he works directly with it.
Thank you. I think the judge summed it up pretty well. This is, Treatment Court's an integral part of the criminal justice system, and largely because it is the most dominant supervised probation that you can get. There used to be the old saying that was hugs for drugs. You know, we get in there, we, you know, we soft-shoe a lot of the people that are in there. But truly, it is a vital portion to the system because it deals with rehabilitation, and it is not something that's easy. It's a three-year intensive supervised probation program. And what we're doing is we're taking these people that are charged with criminal offenses, usually drug or alcohol-related, and we're putting them back into society so that they can work, get jobs, and become a productive member of society. The problem, and I think the judge pointed out pretty clearly, is that we have this board that really isn't supervising anything because it's people from the community that are volunteering their time. And so it's difficult to have an oversight on the day-to-day activities of the Treatment Court. And so by moving it into a county position, it alleviates that need. There would still be a management team, but it would still alleviate the need of having to run and get signatures all over the place. It would alleviate the need of what are we going to do when we have an issue with the coordinator, a personnel issue? And so that's probably one of the more important things. The other issue is that we deal, the Treatment Court deals with a lot of components. I mean, we deal with Southwest Counseling, and Southwest Counseling has a contract with the Treatment Court. And we all know that Southwest Counseling is under the auspices of the county in that regard. So what we're doing is that this fits in to a place that probably is where it should be. Now, as far as the funding is concerned, I mean, I think when we come back, if the commission allows us to be opened into and looked at, the funding's the state. Funding goes away, Treatment Court goes away. I mean, that's kind of what it looks like. I mean, whether or not we're a 501(c)(3) outside the county or whether we're in the county. The funding is from the state. And so, you know, if there's a time down the road, the funding disappears, and all the municipalities and the county wants to hold on to it, then that's a discussion you have then. But really, what we are running off of is the money provided for by the county or by the state. So those are things that we can iron out and get to the questions that the commission has on it when, if we take a look at it, if we go that route, and we'll be able to answer those at a later date.
Thanks, Mr. Aramosbi. Any other questions, comments? I'm getting the vibe, I think you have our blessing to move forward, if everyone's in agreement with that. And we'll look forward to exploring what this may look like and continue to support it. And I know it's a large benefit for both the individuals but also the community. So we certainly are on board with that. So proceed accordingly, and we'll see what it looks like.
So, Mr. Chairman, just a question for logistics. Who will be our, who would you suggest is our point of contact for who we're going to interface with as we're moving forward here directly with the county?
I thought you had that all figured out already.
Well, my guess was going to be Mr. McLean.
He's also in the gallery here this morning, so we'll work through some of that. I don't know that we got the answer right now, but we'll iron that out and definitely have everyone involved.
Sounds like a simple solution. No worries. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
With that, Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is a break. We are right on time, so we will break until 10:45.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. We call this meeting back to order. We left off just after Tab C. We are on item number three, which is an Eden Saloon and RV Park catering permit application for the Darren Macy benefit. Helping us present this this morning, Sally Schumacher. Hand it over to Sally.
Good morning, Commissioners. On behalf of County Clerk Cindy Lane, I present for your consideration a catering permit application submitted by Eden Saloon and RV Park for the Darren Macy benefit, which is scheduled for April 12th, 2025.
Thank you, Sally. Any questions on?
Mr. Chairman, this is for the girl that was injured in the tunnel accident from Farsen. Her family's from Farsen.
Very good. Any questions or comments on this permit application, Commissioners? Not entertain a motion to approve the Eden Saloon and RV Park catering permit application for the Darren Macy benefit to be held on April 12th, 2025 as presented and authorize the chairman to sign.
Mr. Chairman, I will second it.
Motion by Commissioner Richards. Got a second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion's unanimous. Item number four is the filing of the positions and salaries from agencies receiving county funding, and we'll hand it back to Sally.
Thank you. Again, on behalf of County Clerk Cindy Lane, I present the filing of positions and salaries from agencies receiving county funding pursuant to Wyoming statute eighteen dash three dash five one six E, which states that any nonprofit corporation that receives at least twenty-five percent of its total annual budget from county funds, state funds, or both in combination, shall annually submit a list of all full-time positions employed by the corporation and the wages and salaries paid to each position without the name of the employee to the commission, board, council, or agency from which the funds are received.
Thank you, Sally. Questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Toman.
I would just comment that this is a key piece that we should keep under consideration when we're going through budgets, because it's, it really is enlightening as to what kind of work each agency is doing based on their staff.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any other comments? Commissioner Jones?
Mr. Chairman, just one note. The hospital list of people seems to be flip-flopped. One, what they make per month versus what they make per year, so just wanted to make note of that.
Thank you. I will bring that to the accounting attention so that they can correct it before they ever, or before they get this in the newspaper and submit it on the county website.
Thanks, Sally. Good catch, Commissioner. Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
I move to approve the filing of positions and salaries from the agencies receiving county funding as presented and amended.
You have a motion to approve by Commissioner Richards as amended. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
I just want to clarify to those listening that we are not approving these salaries, that that isn't our role. We're just approving the filing of the positions and the salaries from the agencies that have received county funding.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion's unanimous. Moving right along to item number five. We've got the county investment policy. With us this morning is Sweetwater County Treasurer Mark Cowan. Morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Today I present to you the annual investment policy. We did update the investment policy this year to include investments into credit unions, as the legislature has updated that, so that we can actually work with credit unions this year. And that will take place in July. Also, there's an update to the policy that will allow us to invest in equities in the future, once the SLIB board has met and created the guidelines for us to follow for that. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions, comments on the county?
When are you gonna be getting into Bitcoin then?
Personally, I am in Bitcoin, Commissioner, but the county will not be in Bitcoin, I don't think, anytime soon.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Slaughter.
Just once again, looking at the investment policy, I commend Treasurer Cowan in putting this together. I would like to renew my concerns once again with respect to the items contained with respect to equities and investment of equities. I realize that the legislature has now moved that forward and that it was done through a ballot initiative also. Just with my thirty years of experience working in that area, I have concerns, and I believe that anytime you're exposing other people's money to additional risk, it's something that is of concern to me. So, I realize I'm in the minority here, and I think most people agree that, that the returns probably outweigh the risks. I see those risks and what can take place. Just as an example, I would think had we been invested in equities over the last month, we saw the NASDAQ down thirteen percent, and we saw S and P and the Dow down over ten percent. And we would have seen significant decreases in our portfolio and the performance at that point in time, probably on a short-term basis. But I think, once again, just looking at that volatility is something to be aware of, and it's something that I am not comfortable with. So, with respect to that, I have an issue with those portions of the investment policy.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
In the copy we have provided, Section D Roman at fourteen, Paragraph one, corporate bonds, there is a typo. Mr. Cowan has, has emailed us a new copy with, with the correction, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the county investment policy as amended.
We do have a motion to approve the county investment policy as amended by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Nay.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Treasurer Cowan. Next on the agenda, under item number six, is the renewal, the three-year renewal agreement with Granicus. I did chat with staff who seem to be happy with this software still, and I believe in your packet you'll see a three-year agreement with, looks like there's an increase each year with that. So I'd open it up for any discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
It looks like a ten percent annual cost adjustment, and that seems pretty high for software. Typically, when we approve software purchases, we see a three to five percent increase, and I wonder if that is something that Granicus could address at some point.
Sure, we can certainly explore that. I believe.
Tim usually deals with that, right? Tim deals with the contract with them? No?
I believe it renews in June, so we could possibly delay this or table it if you wanna.
Mr. Chairman, that would, that would make me feel a little more comfortable if we can get an answer on that, because ten percent here or there is one thing, but if we, if we see a ten percent increase on this year after year after year, it's gonna quickly become unsustainable. And I don't think, I don't think we can afford that in the long term. We can afford it in the short term if we have to, but in the long term, that would scare me.
I'm good with that. Everyone else okay with that direction? Need a motion on a delay, John? If we delay it?
A motion to postpone.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to postpone the Granicus three-year renewal agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion's unanimous. We will revisit that after we get in touch with Granicus. Moving right along, we've got item number seven, which is a hospital capital fund request. With us this morning is Memorial Hospital Sweetwater County CEO Irene Richardson, CFO Tammy Love. And I believe that's it. Good morning to you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us. As you said, I'm Irene Richardson. I'm the CEO of Memorial Hospital Sweetwater County, and Tammy Love is our Chief Financial Officer. And we are here today to respectfully request funding for two essential capital improvement projects at the hospital. There are funds that had been held over from prior budgets, and earmarked as a capital fund for the hospital, and we're respectfully requesting the allocation of these funds for some, for these two capital projects. On behalf of the hospital, we do sincerely extend our gratitude to the county commissioners for providing us with the necessary resources to uphold our mission of compassionate care for every life we touch, and also our vision to be the community's trusted healthcare leader. And we're very appreciative of the long and beneficial relationship we've had with the county commissioners and the hospital, and it's successfully provided healthcare services to Sweetwater County community, or Sweetwater community for more than one hundred and thirty years. So, the two projects that we will be submitting today, one is for the OB suite renovation. I believe you guys have all the details, but basically the renovation is for four hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. And we will be replacing the existing bathtubs with showers in that area. And also adding a dedicated bathroom to the recovery room. You probably already know that there are, have been several hospitals that have closed their OB units around our area. Kemmer, the hospital in Kemmer closed their OB unit. Rollins closed theirs, and Evanston closed theirs, and we're getting a lot of patients coming in. A lot of those patients have been seeking care at the hospital, and we want to be able to provide the best care that we can for them and be available for them. We do deliver about four hundred babies a year, so we're very busy, and this is an essential service that needs to be, that needs to be there for the residents of our, of our county. And we think this is gonna be a really nice construction project that we'll be able to provide a much better experience for the patients who come and seek our services. The next project, project number two, is a powerhouse roof replacement. The project entails a replacement of the roof on our powerhouse building with a base cost of seventy-three, seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. And then the new roof will also include fall protection measures to ensure the safety of maintenance personnel with a base cost of thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars. So, those are the two projects that we're requesting. I believe that they are in total five hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars. We're just requesting the five hundred thousand dollars that has been set aside from the prior year budgets. Again, we just are very grateful to the commissioners. You guys have been wonderful partners to us, and you've helped us to be able to maintain the hospital. Of course, the building was built in nineteen seventy-seven, and we've been taking care of a lot of deferred maintenance over the last several years. And we are greatly appreciative of, of the support and assistance of the county commissioners to do that. We hope the building can be there for many, many years, and that's what our goal is, to be able to, to provide the services in that building for lots of years to come for the community.
Thanks, Irene. Appreciate it. Questions or comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Jones?
No questions, I don't think, but just kind of a little review of how we got to where we are last year. I believe we agreed to set aside five hundred thousand dollars earmarked for the hospital with potential idea that possibly down the road, we would be able to do some amount of money each year, so that when they came to a large capital project, there would be funds available, whether or not it would cover the whole project, we didn't know, but so that was kind of the idea behind it. That's where, how we got to where we are. I think the, the idea of saving the money up over the years is a, is a great idea, but they've come to a situation where the OB world is different than it was a year ago. And it's time to move forward in this department. The hospital's done an outstanding job of trying to move healthcare forward. If we just think back not very far, started with, well, of course, the, the cancer wing came into play. We put a brand-new, state-of-the-art, three-D mammal machine in. Then, not long after that, a couple of years, if I remember right, was the robotic surgery for internal surgery. A year maybe later was the robot for hip and knee replacement. So, hospital's done an outstanding job of moving forward and improving healthcare and improving the facility in large part on their own, so this is just kind of a, another step forward, and sounds like we've got some pregnant mothers that probably need our service.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Toman.
I think it's great that you're doing outreach to the other counties, because I saw your big ads in Kemmer, and that's great that you're doing that.
Yeah, we want that. I mean, we're here. Obviously, we're gonna keep our OB services open.
Well, and it's probably safer for them to come here than try to go over the hill to Jackson, Idaho Falls, or Salt Lake.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. You do a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I guess my concern here is you know, we we set aside money and and it's always a hard discussion when you when you set aside money, cuz in the back of my mind, I say, oh, we're gonna set aside half a million for future projects, and immediately we hear somebody says, well, I'm gonna I'm gonna find some way to spend that money. I think our you our our money is better used when we leverage it to acquire other money. Um, and in in this case, we're leveraging it with ninety-five percent our money and five percent your money, that doesn't sound like like leverage, and I I just I just thought it was kind of funny in the in the letter. We're only we're only asking for five hundred thousand of the five hundred and twenty-six thousand, that's that's a that's a lot of money, is is there some avenues to maybe get some slip money or something like that? Or where the our five hundred thousand dollars can or a portion could be leveraged to 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 get this capital done without our entire reserve disappearing all in one fell swoop?
Oh, we there's there's definitely grants out there, um, you know, we 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 can look for for grants, they have to be specific um to what what, you know, you're asking for. Um, there's definitely opportunities for that. Um, you know, we were requesting the funds, like we said, um, as as a holdover from prior years that we didn't use uh because we were trying to find a project that would be um useful and beneficial to the residents of the community. So so we were trying to be mindful of that, too. Um, and and, you know, again, very, very grateful for for the funds that the commissioners give us and um, and a lot of those, a lot of the maintenance projects that we do actually do come out of our cash flow from operations. Um, and this is, this is just something that we thought would be a a good community kind of um collaboration to be able to continue to provide services for OB patients in our in our area and surrounding areas um that we could work together with um the commissioners and and be able to say that that we would be able to provide those services collaboratively. Uh, if if that's, you know, the request is that we we look for other sources of funding, we could, we could try to look for that. Um, yeah, I'm not sure that we'll be able to find it, but um we might be ha- we might have to come back here and ask for the money again. Um, but but we could definitely do that. Um, I I, like I said, I just think that we've, uh, these are projects that that is that are necessary now and a good use of these funds that we have not used. Um, and and we thought this would be a good time to to use these funds as these services are necessary and um and beneficial for the community.
Mr. Chairman. I I guess it's it's not really so much holdover from previous years, just two years ago, we spent multiple millions of dollars on capital capital projects, so we we have been putting money towards resources. I do remember a conversation about this particular half half million. I I'm just unsure that the idea was to throw it in the pot and get it spent as fast as we could. I I I personally would rather see, again, this money leveraged to 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 create a larger pot of money. And and I'm I'm willing to go forward with this pending that kind of kind of commitment from the hospital to look for some other other funding to leverage, cuz once this half million is gone, it's gone. It's it's not there to me to to meet an emergency or media need anymore. Um, I think the roofing project really fits that definition. Um, but we didn't overnight decide that our our maternity wards were wrong, apparently this is something that's been brewing for a a long time, and I think I think deserves a little bit more treatment in a in a strategic plan than just a a quick request from us. I don't know how the rest of you feel.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jones.
I think this hasn't really been brewing for a long time, if I remember right, in the last year uh Evanston and Rollins shut down, am I correct? That seemed right like the right timeframe.
Cameron was first and then Rollins.
It was Cameron, then Evanston, and then Rollins, wasn't it? So Evanston and Rollins were probably in the last year ish, give or take a few weeks. So I don't think it's really been I mean, I don't know that it's been brewing for a long time, because I don't think anybody knew that all three were gonna close down until they did, so that's uh that's a little bit different, but I guess Commissioner Richards, would you be amenable to approving this with the idea that they first seek grant monies? If they find them, then the money would be money they don't need would stay in the uh earmarked account for the hospital, and then whatever's left over, whatever they need, we would approve. Is that the direction you're wanting to go?
Mr. Chairman, I I'm I'm amenable to that. Yeah, I think I I think I can I can get behind that, as as long as I know we're seeking, cuz uh clearly, we're addressing we're no longer addressing a Sweetwater County need, we're addressing a regional need. And I'm and I'm sure it's appropriate for us to fund all of that regional need, so I think that makes it ripe for going out and asking the state to invest in this or or the feds to invest in this, because this is a a statewide problem, not just a Sweetwater County problem.
So I've got kind of a little bit of a different take on it. Um, first off, I applaud you guys for always looking to the future and trying to adapt to the changes like this that come about. I think healthcare is ever advancing, and it's probably something you never can fully keep up with, so uh you guys are always proactive in trying to meet up with the needs and deferred maintenance, and I applaud that. I, the timing is a little bit off for me, simply because we're heading into budget, and we've already sent out, you know, letters to some of our outside agencies, asking them to prepare for the inevitable with some of the cuts that we're gonna be faced between our valuation being down, but also from the legislature, and so to me, it feels a little bit contradictory to then turn around, and although we have set this money aside, but it was also set aside knowing that should the need arise where we need it to help balance the budget, that, you know, we can, because it is the county money. Um, so I I would prefer it to see it at budget time, and perhaps that settles the idea to give you guys time to look into grant funding, and by then we'll have a better idea financially speaking of where we are at, and if you guys have any match funds, what that may look like. I know that kind of puts the project on hold for a bit, but to me, I just think that would be easier for me to make a decision, and I'm not saying I'm against it, but if it was a today decision, I I probably would be simply for those factors, so. Commissioner Slaughter?
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to express basically the same concerns that you did. Um, I I, once again, I I do agree that we have set this funding aside, and I was going to ask i- if it would be a a huge concern to put this off potentially and and look for the things which Commissioner Richards has looked at for other funding sources potentially, and then bring it back as part of the budget for this year, which is kind of what the commissioner has, or what the chairman has asked. So I I I don't know if the timing for you is that imperative that you get started immediately, or if it could be done that way. But I I would, you know, look uh more favorably upon it, I think, too, if we could see it in that in that manner and have, give you the opportunity to look for those other potential funding sources, and then look at it as part of our overall budget also.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely do that. Um, you know, I we do have, we do have some money left over in this year's budget. Um, i- if if that's something that you guys would would consider using this year's budget for, um, I think we have some remaining balance of our maintenance fund.
And is there a need for that one point one, aside from this, I mean, through the remainder of the year, do you think? Yeah.
And that's what we've been trying to do, is we've been using our funding for a lot of these capital projects. And so that's what we did last time, is we didn't use the entire amount, so we set it aside for a project that we thought what would be a good project that we could bring forward, and and this was the one that we we identified. Um, you know, cuz cuz we do, you know, we finished our oncology project, we're remodeling our radiology area to bring in new equipment. Um, we've done a lot of capital projects out of our own cash flow from operations um because it's important that we maintain that hospital, right? We did a lot of HVAC remodeling, a lot of those things, so so I think it's important that we do this. Um, again, you know, we we um, you know, uh, we we like to to just be able to um to have your consideration for for helping us fund some of these projects. Either this year or next year. Um, but we do, again, like I said, have some money left over in this year's budget, which we were, we're trying to hold over so that we can do exactly what you said, Commissioner Richards, is hold it over for a capital fund that we could um have um year over year, so that we could use it for bigger capital projects. Um, and that's what we've been trying to do. Of course, we're very transparent with our funding, whatever funding you give us, we come back every year and show you guys exactly where we spent that funding. Um, so we're accountable to it, and we're transparent with it, we've just tried to be frugal with it, and because we know, we understand what budget cuts you guys have to deal with and what's coming up in the future, and we've tried to kind of hold back from coming to request these things, but um, you know, we just wondered if that was something that you guys would consider one with that holdover from the prior year, or if it's something that you would consider with the funding that we have this year. Um, or if you guys just want us to go look for grant funding, we can also try and do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
Irene, I apologize, I always feel like I'm the one picking on you, but I I I just feel like it's my job to ask a lot of questions. Uh, I think you mentioned four hundred births a year. Um, we have three three maternity suites, is that what we're talking about remodeling? Two, two waiting rooms ahead of time that we're looking at remodeling?
Yes.
I- is that what you have, is three? So we're not using the whole suite at all, or or just? So how how often is that happening, cuz you said four hundred, four hundred births a year during sixty-five days a year, we're at one point one, one point two a day?
It's full.
So how 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 often is that happening that it's full, is it like it's happened three times, or is there something that's happening consistently?
One summer, that's what I would say.
So how many birthing suites, maternity suites do you have complete, totally? Five. Two of them have showers, three of them don't, is that what I'm? I think this is a very valid project. Um, but I I think it's a bigger project than one meeting worth, I think, I I think it, I think it's well worth the least pursuing leverageable money to do this. I'd love to come back in a month and and hear that you've found found money that we could put a hundred grand of leverage due into the whole project, and we still have some money back born. And and again, I think the roof roofing project completely fits under what are what we were thinking under capital projects was something happens, and something has happened, we have a leaky roof. Um, but I but I also think this maternity ward remodel is something we need to, we need to pursue, so that's kind of kind of how I fit in the puzzle, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tillman.
Well, that's the liberal on the commission nowadays, oh. I did not want to see babies born in a tender and a stable, and since the money was already from carryover from other years, I I don't have a problem with them using it to update that, but I would not have a problem also making it part of our total budget uh discussion. If you can find other money, or if you can use the existing maintenance money you have, but I don't think you're out of order to ask for something that you guys have preserved for purposes like this, so I would be as supportive doing it, but if you could hang on till we kind of get through the budget discussions and try to find other, maybe you can find something in the meantime, or or use your come with a better proposal to us, I guess.
Any other comments? I think what I'm hearing is it's not a no, but we would like to see if there's other any potential fundings we can put towards the project. Um, in that meantime, obviously, we have budget requests coming through, so hopefully you have some answers by then, and then obviously, if you have some carryover that you were planning to put towards that reserve as well, you know, maybe there's a way between those three factors that we can come to fruition on it, so a little more study and a little more details on some of the financials, and we'll revisit it again, if if that's what I'm understanding.
We support you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you both very much for coming over, appreciate it. All right, our final item under the action presentation items this morning is a presentation of the Southwest Counseling Services Board of Directors Comprehensive Plan. And with us this morning is Chair Kayleen Logan, as well as some staff, and I believe other board members, so good morning to you all.
Good morning, thank you for hearing us and putting on the agenda, um, Commissioners. Um, one of the things that um I wanted to present this morning was that when we re- when we received our agreement with the county back in October of um last year of twenty twenty-four, um, there was a fifth section in that agreement um that um was added, and that fifth, um, I I wanted to talk a little bit about how that came about. Um, the the Community Board of Southwest Counseling Service has the duty to review and evaluate hu- human service programs operating within its jurisdiction to to submit to the county commissioners um a comprehensive plan for the establishment, development, and promotion of human service programs to ensure that the human service programs, which are authorized by the county commissioners, are funded by the county or the division, are executed and maintained, and ensure that the clients are charged fees for services provided. In um the per- in the proposed um agreement, there was a fifth area that um the county commissioners had asked us to develop a comprehensive plan. And at that point in time, we met with a um consultant with Open Minds. Open Minds had already been into the organization earlier in the spring of last year and had done some evaluation and worked with Linda and the executive team giving evaluations of how um they felt and the organization was doing and would be doing in the upcoming two years. Um, the first thing that I wanted to go over and review is the existing programs that are funded by the county commissioners. And that includes the adult crisis stabilization, the emergency Title twenty-five um program, and the um, the suicide prevention programs, the adult social detox, the detention center treatment, and then um also the cost of the administration and facilities. In the packet that was um delivered, um, the financial explanation is there. Um, the fifth program that was referenced as a priority in the budget agreement is a twenty-three hour bed program. This program does not presently exist, but is desired by the commissioners, the board members, and the leaders of the community. In developing this review, the leadership at Southwest Counseling Service considered the types of persons generally referred by the local and sheriff deputies, and what sort of programs might best meet the needs of the person served will being the most cost effective. Um, we definitely would like feedback and consideration of what we're proposing um in this comprehensive plan. The first is a traditional twenty-three hour bed. Um, that center would operate twenty-four seven, it would offer a safe and supportive environment where individuals can receive prop um comprehensive assessments, crisis intervention, sta- and stabilization services. The goal is to stabilize the individuals within twenty-three hours and discharge them to another level of care or release with appropriate community supports. Um, in the packet, there is a complete breakdown of the overall cost for this program. Um, it in it is approximately one million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The second is a less medically oriented program that would have a broader reach in terms of its target prob- population. Um, we're referring to this option as a drop-off center, and the goal of this program would be solely to provide safe short-term stay for individuals not requiring medical and or law enforcement intervention or attention. Um, it would utilize five beds and offer immediate support. It would utilize five beds and offer immediate support and a place to regain stability. It would help to stabilize the individuals and transition them to a more permanent solution. And it would not be limited to twenty three hours and would allow an average of three to four bed utilization stay. The initial budget for this program is approximately one million. In the packet, we summarized and presented the existing locations. That Southwest Counseling is utilizing. Eleven of them are. Buildings that are provided by the county. The other two buildings are rental buildings that are used. As residential facilities for people who are transitioning out of the program. There is another building, the Jonah Office, that is currently with ARPA monies is being updated and remodeled. The proposed strategy for the comprehensive plan. Has five elements. The first element is financial stability. This is a really big concern for the leadership of the organization as well as the board. Currently, the state of Wyoming is undergoing and. Different type of billing system. For us to receive services. At one point. It was more broad spectrum. Anybody that fit into the poverty level were able to come in and obtain services. At this point, the state has identified three targeted populations in the new billing system. Which is high risk youth and families. Those with severe and acute mental illnesses and those involved with the criminal system. The criminal justice system. It requires anyone that receives services to apply for the Medicaid program, whether or not they're eligible or not. If they, this is the caveat that can be difficult for the agency. If they don't complete that application. And for Medicaid, then they are not eligible at all for any services that are funded through the state. That is becoming difficult because. It's a choice for somebody to apply for that kind of program and some people are not willing to do it. Even under the OSMAS that they would receive the services. The other problem with the change to the state is that the payments are much slower. The payments are made in three formats now. It they're paid in grant based funds. A fee for service, which is based on funds and a new category for incentives. The incentive category is difficult because that is. Based upon how the organization has done over the previous year. And some of that money will be a year to two years out before we see any of that money. And the third and most difficult is the amount of money that the provider will receive in the best case scenario. Is if all incentives and administrative work is correct, is less than in prior years. Due to this impact, providers will need to serve more people who are covered, experience slower payments, and even in the best scenario. Receive less tran- less money. This year, we're in the period of a transition year where the state has guaranteed a certain amount of money. The state is really slow at being able to get people who are applying for Medicaid up. Into the system. However, one of the things that I feel very proud about as a member of the board. Is that Southwest Counseling is considered one of the two providers in the state. Who are showing proficiency with the new administrative requirements. And I think. It's also a good place to identify that Melissa and her billing team. Are ahead of any other mental health organization in the state. In getting the appropriate billing entered into the system, which then means hopefully. That we will receive money faster, but that's kind of, we're just in, we're in the process of figuring this out. The other difficulty and that we have identified is recruitment and retention. The state of Wyoming is one of the states that's designated to be the in the area. Where mental health professionals are not meeting the are are not available to be able to meet the needs. Of the state. Turnover is much higher in rural areas. And it's it's difficult to find people and recruit people to be able to provide mental health services. Actually, they are predicting nationwide that this deficit will not improve until twenty thirty six. We have installed a new human resource payroll system. To help reduce the workload of the HR staff in payroll processing. And to be able to help support staff in other areas in recruitment of of staff. The other area that was identified through. This consultation is that there is a real need and concern. That the reputation and brand of Southwest Counseling. Needs to improve and that there's a lot of negative options. And opinions, not options, opinions held by people in the community that do affect Southwest Counseling Services in multiple ways. There are two primary, primary reasons for that. One is that there is actually a lack of services for people who are in acute circumstances. And need of of some level of support, but don't qualify for the Title twenty five commitment. The other area of concern involves access difficulties. Southwest Counseling did follow years ago the state recommendations to develop open access. However, the difficulty with open access is that the there are limited hours and days per week that that is available. And that is seen by the consumer as. Difficulties in terms of being able to obtain services. Anyway, that's what was found through the consultation. We and then there's also the need for a twenty three hour bed drop off center. This is hopefully an area to be able to coverage cover the gaps. And is available for people who are unable to appropriately care for themselves. Who are involved with law enforcement as a result of community complaints and who do not qualify for the twenty five coverage. And that's been a long term. Communication within the community in terms of how could those individuals. Have improved services. The commissioners requested only a plan for review. But given the real need of the county and issues with branding, the board and executive staff jointly think that this deserves to be a prime theme for growth. Even in the face of the financial concerns of this year and especially with the new. B H R and changes federally with the new administration. The program, one of the things that I did want to make clear is that the twenty three hour bed drop off. The twenty three hour bed or drop off center. Truly will need to be voluntary. That means that both police, medical, and clinical staff would me need to be dedicated to doing all they could to encourage. And motivate people to use and accept that choice. And that's really much different than the twenty three or the emergency detention system that is in place. The organization does need to. Align and update the vision and mission and improve new financial reporting. That is fairly well identified under that section in the comprehensive plan. Where the board and the administration is process of trying to. Look at operating policies and procedures to make that more clear to everyone. And we're also developing a financial, a new financial reporting system. That monitors county funds and their uses as well as other. Ways that Southwest Counseling are obtaining money from either grants or from the state and Melissa's in the process of trying. Develop that and making that operational. I think that will start in the April meeting, correct? Thirdly, we'll develop an annual work plan based on the elements of the strategic plan. That the county commissioners will approve and will seek to effectively implement as needed. And then in the comprehensive plan is a summary, is an appendix. Of the program description of both the twenty three hour. Mental health drop off center as well as the county plan for the five bed drop off facility. We can go over that or do you want to entertain questions at this time or?
Very good. That was very descriptive. I appreciate that. Certainly, we can go into the discussions on it if you guys are wrapped up with your piece of it. I. Appreciate you taking the time to explain all that. It's it's a very complex organization that. I understood everything you were saying, but it took me two years to get to that point and I still don't have it all figured out. So it's a a lot of moving parts. I commend you all for moving forward with open minds and trying to come up and develop this comprehensive plan. I know that was. Little bit of a sticking point with the timeframe we put on there with our agreement with you all. The intent of that wasn't to hold you all to the coals, but. To try and, you know, beginning the planning process to address. The gap in service that you spoke about and I I realize it's not easy and if it was, everyone would be doing it. And so. There's certainly challenges that come along with that, especially with the behavioral health redesign. And going through it. I don't know that it's it's a plan per se. It's probably a start and I I don't want to be too negative because I think it's. A great stride in the right direction and you've done a lot of work to get to this point. And so I. I hope that continues that we can continue to help you and support you in that effort. I I hate when it comes back immediately with. You know, this is going to cost one point three million. This one's going to cost one million. Obviously, there's going to be a cost involved, but can that be? Through reorganization? Is that all new staff? Is that all new facilities? I mean, that's kind of how it comes across, almost like a a worst case scenario. But some of these services you're already providing, you know, I mean, I believe last I knew you had five sub acute beds and. I realize that's a little bit different than the twenty three hour. You know, stay, but maybe not so much on the drop off center. And so, you know, we've had conversations with the hospital as far as. You know, them at times feeling like a drop off center and. You know, when law enforcement doesn't have anywhere to go, it it seems as though it was either the hospital or, you know, the detention center. And so. What can we do to to address that and what does that look like? And I think this was a great start. But I'm not, I'm not convinced that it's that expensive and I know it's it's a new territory, but. I believe you have around a hundred and forty beds, you know, totally. And so what does that look like? To shift some of those, if that's even an option. I just think that. I was hoping for a little bit more and I don't want to say that I'm. Not proud and appreciative of the work you put into it because I most certainly am. But I think getting down into the logistics of what it all looks like is why it's so difficult because if we just say, you know, it's going to cost us over a million dollars, then no one wants to do that. And. I think, you know, we need to dig a little deeper and perhaps that's your next steps, but you've asked for feedback, so.
I think, yeah, I think one of the things that. Were requesting and asking is. In the plan, you had asked to develop a twenty three hour crisis bed. We discovered in the process of looking at this that there is a much wider need. And so with this comprehensive plan and the reason by which we're submitting it as early as we are. Is we were wanting to give two options. And to get feedback so that we can proceed forward. With the planning and where we need to go with this. I can let. Melissa also talk a little bit about the finances of it because. When Mr. Wolf Health has developed this comprehensive plan. He did a lot of communicating with Linda and Melissa about the finances. And so if it's okay, I'll turn that over to Melissa to address some of those concerns.
Absolutely.
Chairman West, Commissioners, Melissa Ray Marquetti, CFO for Southwest Counseling, if you didn't already know that. So I'll just kind of touch base in terms of the finances. The twenty million dollar budget that Southwest Counseling Service has. Fifteen point six four million dollars of that is grant funds that we receive. And so with those grants, I just kind of wanted to touch on, I think, where you were maybe headed, Commissioner, was that. We would probably need to look for grants to go ahead and fund a a twenty three hour or a facility, either of the two or something a little bit more deeper. And I think we could look at, you know, what grant funding there is, but the fifteen point six four million dollars. Those dollars that are received by the agency are very specific in what those dollars may be used for. So you mentioned the sub acute beds. Within our state contract that we've received. It outlines and says, these are the areas where you may provide services. And we're kind of limited to those areas. So in order to go ahead and I I would speak to to make something of this work. We would have to look for outside funding sources because, again, I'll use our SOAR MAT grant that is very specific where those dollars may be used. And how they may be used and with what populations even down to diagnosis level. So just kind of wanted to give a overall picture of the funding that we have, what makes up our budget. Again, of the twenty million, fifteen point six is is grant and very specific grant dollars. Not to say that there couldn't be additional talks of, you know, what does that look like at the state level with those funding? But as it stands currently, our contracted dollars are earmarked for what they are. So that's my quick overview. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions that I'm sure are very easy, but they may go to. Chairman's point that it took him two years to understand everything you just presented and I haven't had those two years. If you can kind of go over the the operational costs for the two, they. They're, the items are somewhat similar, but they're not all the same. I assume it has something to do with the level of care. I just don't know. And so that's where I I got into some things like. Facility rent was either a hundred and twenty thousand a year or twenty four thousand a year, utilities seventy two hundred to thirty. I mean, they're just in. There are different topics under one that that don't fall under the other, so. Help me understand, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Linda Akron. I'm the CEO of Southwest Counseling. Commissioner Jones, that's an excellent question. And I think the two projects. In speaking to Mr. Wolf, he asked that from the constituents he talked to. They wanted to be able to drop people off at any time of the day or night. And they probably will not have, they have limited to no resources, limited to no money. And they just need to be in a shelter or a safe place for a period of time. And so that's really when you look at that difference, it's non medical. A person would not be bringing those individuals into that drop off, the five bed, if they had a medical need or if. They had committed a crime, they would certainly not be coming into that facility. But during that period of time, that three to five days. And you've got to remember, and I think I can't remember who exactly said that. I think it was Kayleen. These are voluntary people. They come voluntary to us and if they come in the door and they say. We're not staying here. We don't like your rules. We're not going to do this, then they have to leave and. They may be escalated up to an emergency detention if there. Could be a harm to themselves or others. So the one is without medical, just very limited. The other one is with. Some medical, but not the full, the true twenty three hour is a medical model which Southwest Counseling doesn't have. But we could do a non medical model with getting a nurses, some techs. But and then I think when we provided you with the buildings. There's one building that we don't utilize except in the summer. We're utilizing it right now because of the ARPA grants and having to close down two of our houses. And it's the facility on Ninth Street. Which if Gene was here, he'd be smiling at me. And it's the facility on Ninth Street, which if Gene was here, he'd be smiling at me because it's probably our, the oldest facility that the county owns, but it, it's still a decent facility that could be utilized. And Commissioner Jones, there wouldn't be any rent there because the county already owns it. And so I think once we get into the details, Commissioner West, then we could look at, what's it really going to cost us? Because this is just a tentative budget, but we didn't want you to think it would be free because it is costly because you're talking about 24-hour care around the clock. So I hope I've explained the difference better. The first one, it's just anybody who, who needs housing, needs a meal, needs a bed, would be able to come in. And that's single occupancy. The other one is also single occupancy, which really takes down our beds. And Southwest Counseling has 108 beds. We always got to remember that we have beds in Uwena County that really do not belong to Sweetwater County. They are Uwena County's. And Uwena County is in discussion about, is that a possibility of those beds just rolling right and the money right over to Uwena County? So it'd be less confusing, I think. So I hope I answered your question. I don't know if I did. Yeah, go ahead.
Sure.
Commissioners, Commissioner West, Commissioners, as you mentioned, kind of the big discrepancy, I think, is what we were looking at in terms of one of the facilities has a very high mortgage, higher utilities, higher costs. The other one has lower costs. So when I'm looking over the budget, the intent of the secondary drop-off facility, the intent of that, and it's not really explained that well in there, is that it would be like a house, a home, that would have, for instance, a monthly rent of $2,000 versus the medical or the true 23-hour would be something that would need to be outfitted as more of a medical facility. So that's why you'll see a large discrepancy in what those budgeted dollar amounts or proposed amounts would be. Again, there could be some ones, some places, I think Commissioner West, as you stated, that we would want to really kind of drill down and look at. This was very preliminary in terms of a plan to go ahead and meet the budgeted agreement that we have with the county, to go ahead and have something prepared and ready. But I do think that there is some fine tuning of what those costs would actually look like. But again, that's where there's that discrepancy, so I just wanted to address why it looks so different. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Toman.
Well, the shocking part is a $20 million budget, it was 13 a couple of years ago, a $20 million budget. We have 42,000 residents in this county, so we could pay each one of them $500,000. So how many clients are you serving? So it must be an astronomical amount per client. It seems to me there ought to be some way to streamline those, those are, I'm not a healthcare professional, so I'm not criticizing what you're doing or anything, but, but the money that is spent per client is just, has got to be astronomical.
Chairman West, Commissioner Toman, residential services is about $4 million of that. And the residential services alone for substance use disorder, they're approximately there for a minimum of four to six months. And then for mental health residential treatment, we talk about transitional living and long-term living in those homes. The reality is those homes are their houses, they are their homes. And they rarely, sometimes they do transition out, but then they come back. But with the payment reform of BHR, of only receiving money, one client at a time at reduced rates, Southwest Counseling is really going to struggle. And with, when Mr. Ray Wolf from Open Minds came and met with myself and the management team, it was, how does Southwest Counseling prepare for BHR? And one of the things he said, and he asked us, can you acquire other practices? Well, in looking at that, that's, it just didn't seem feasible. But the other one he asked was this, in order to sustain Southwest Counseling into the future, into the future, do, is it possible you could be part of another entity? And we know that there's a large entity that's taken over a number of the community mental health systems, but we're so unique because we're part of a community board and we have the county with us. But long-term is going to really be scary for Southwest Counseling. We get less money per the work we do. The average that we get for a bed day is $110 a day. You don't even go to a motel and get a motel room for $110 or $120. So I, I commend the board and I commend the county commissioners in pressing this forward, but finances are going to be critical to this entity. And we do an outstanding service in Sweetwater County. We may have our critics, and I know we do. People get angry over their diagnosis, they get angry about when they can schedule their appointments. But what the county commissioners really need to know, we are doing an outstanding job for our community. We're seen at the state level as a leader in community and behavioral health services, but it's, it's a lot of money, but today it has changed for Southwest Counseling. We will only be trued up one more time. And the incentive payments that Ms. Logan referred to, Southwest Counseling's only had one client identified by the state so far for an incentive client, and that one client refused to participate, so there is no money coming to Southwest Counseling. So you need to know, any amount of money we get, Commissioner Toman, we want to pour back into this community. And I'm always for more services. I don't want somebody to be out there in the community that has no place to go because law enforcement has them, they want to do the right thing for them and there's no place to go. It is a community problem. It's going to take all of us, but Southwest Counseling wants to do their part. I would love to have a 23-hour. I would love to have a five-day facility for people to come into. I mean, we want to provide services to people to get them better, but our finances, Commissioner Toman, have really changed.
$20 million, though, it's just, I just cannot wrap my head around that for the number of people you serve. I know mental health is a growing need, but honest to heavens, it looks like you could consolidate some of those services and streamline and, I mean, the amount of people you have on staff is greater probably than the number of people you serve. And I know it's a high demand, but it, it still, it, it does not make sense to me. $20 million budget is just beyond my comprehension.
Commissioner Toman, we, we have, I think, 138 employees at Southwest Counseling right now, but in a year's time, we provide over 60,000 direct service hours, direct contact with clients in this community. And I wish our, I wish the people who are happy with Southwest Counseling would come forward, but there's such a stigma against mental illness and against substance disorders that they, they've, they don't want to come forward. We see it in our survey that we get with the state of Wyoming. It's positive for the most part, but everything costs a lot of money today. Psychiatric services are at least $225, higher end is $425 an hour. There are expenses in providing behavioral health, there's no doubt about it.
Chairman West, Commissioner Toman, one of the items that I was just going to point out, and I would be more than happy to go ahead and meet one-on-one to kind of explain, it only took Keaton two years or Commissioner West two years to go ahead and understand the funding sources that we receive and those individuals that are served. You probably well know that the prevention grant is one that is passed through to Southwest Counseling Service. So again, that's a larger grant that has a different direction on where that goes. But I would be more than happy to, we actually have a very high penetration rate when it comes to behavioral health amongst the entire nation of how many people live in our community and how many people we're actually touching and affecting and treating. And so I would have to pull up the penetration rate, but there is a, we are much higher than the national standard of being able to serve those individuals.
Well, maybe we'd be better off to pay, to send them to a facility where you paid a per-patient fee, totally. I mean, $20 million is a lot. And I don't know that you're looking at the bang for the buck and of being able to progress those patients, but I'm not going to belabor the point. I mean, I know you have to run the facility and, but I would just challenge you to try to figure out how to be more efficient.
Thank you, Commissioner Toman.
Additional comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards?
So I've, I've been to two meetings now, got my head totally wrapped around it, way ahead of you. I, I think it's unfortunate that this is the day that no legislators show up because we see a trend here. Legislature remakes the entire system, touts their commitment to mental health and then cuts everybody's budget. Ours, Southwest Counseling combined, and I, and I wish some of them were here to, to hear what the needs of, of mental health is. To push back a little bit, Commissioner Toman, 20, 20 million spread across 45,000 people is about $444 per person. $20 million spread across 60,000 hours is about $333 an hour. And you heard her say that psychiatric care is between 225 and 425. We as a nation, especially as a state, don't invest anywhere near enough into mental health. But I guess, I guess the real question is, is how do we, how do we provide services with the funding we have? Because we, we can wish for more funding, but it's not there. I, I guess my question is, if we did a drop-off facility, one, would it actually be utilized by the people who need it? Or would it be there and staffed and then become a homeless shelter for free meals and free lodging for a few nights when people need it? I, I, I'm afraid of that being the case. And I guess two, a lot of our, our problems are, are dealing with Title 25. Could this, could this be a facility that helps us, helps us transition somebody who was titled, but a day later is told, well, it's really, it's really not a title, but you still need some help because we struggled with that? Is that a, is, is that a part of this discussion or?
Commissioner West, Commissioner Richards, in the comprehensive plan that was submitted, there was a study of one day of Title 25 individuals that presented. Of the 30 individuals that presented at the emergency room for Title 25, only one met the criteria for an emergency detention. And so we're talking about those 29 individuals that presented having mental health difficulties and were without any type of services or available resources. And so that's where I think when we were doing this comprehensive plan, we started to look at, do we need a one-bed system? That's a 23-hour crisis system for, for that group of individuals to figure out what needs to happen for one individual? Or would the money be better served if we moved to a drop-off center where there could be more intensive assessments and discharge plans, transition plans made so that these individuals that are presenting for emergency need at the hospital could receive services in a less restrictive manner? And that's where the, where it became more apparent to us when we were looking at developing this comprehensive plan, are we really in need of a 23-hour bed, crisis stabilization bed? Or are we really looking at a need for a drop-off center where we could do some crisis intervention and develop, develop plans and get people stabilized? I think the other thing that I would like to also address is that Southwest Counseling receives referrals from the state hospital of people that are very chronically mentally ill. These individuals without a lot of support would be homeless on the streets. Southwest Counseling has been identified as one of the leading organizations in the state, developing a program for them, and they do have residential beds and transitional beds for these individuals. And, you know, some of the individuals that are coming from the state hospital need a lot of support and some of them need a group home support, which also requires higher level of care for them to be able to stay stable in the community and not require a hospital bed at the state hospital. So Southwest Counseling does a lot of stabilization and transitioning, transitioning people either for them to be able to live independently or for them to be able to live in a transitional bed or in the group homes that are provided.
Commissioner Slaughter?
Mr. Chairman, having not had the two meetings that Commissioner Richards has had nor two years of experience that Commissioner West has, I, I would like to be honest with you and let you know that the first part of your presentation seemed as if it were Chinese immersion to me. I, I'm certainly trying to learn and I have, I've learned some parts of, of how your operation works. And, and certainly I have a lot of faith in our liaisons from the board and, and the information they've given us. It looks to me like you've done an awful lot of work with respect to this. I appreciate that. I would like to see us continue with a collaborative effort moving forward on this. And really, that's about the best that I can give at this point in time, so thank you.
Thank you for your consideration, Commissioner.
And I did make a math error, so he corrected me on that, so it's not quite as alarming to me per person, but it still seems that there could be some streamlining. I do appreciate the comprehensive plan because it does explain a lot of the things that we were asking for, but I still think you need to really, really do a hard look at your finances.
Commissioner West, Commissioner Toman, we're very much aware of that and Melissa has been working really hard and looking at the efficiency of programs, the efficiency of our budget. We're very much aware that with the financial difficulties that we're facing, that we've really got to look at things. We also need to either look at trying to merge organizations, be able to get more grant monies. That is concerning with what is happening this year at the federal level and the state level. We just don't know if there's going to be as many grants available for us to be able to reach out and obtain. So it's a difficult time right now, especially, and, and not just for Southwest Counseling, but I think for all organizations and definitely for you, because I'm aware that your budget has also been reduced as well. So we're just trying to do the best that we can and, and make, make available services for individuals with really severe mental illnesses.
Well, I, I don't want to discredit what the organization does. I think it goes without saying, you do a tremendous job and you wouldn't be standing here today without that. And sometimes it's easy to overshadow that when you're trying to focus on, you know, a need that needs to be addressed within the community. Obviously, we have a, a very large mental health issue, you know, here in Sweetwater County, and that's the goal. The goal isn't to try and have a heavy hand on your organization or your board, but to try and address the issue because it's difficult. And, you know, even just yesterday, I had a conversation with law enforcement that they've obtained a grant to basically get their staff iPads that they can have in the field and connect with tele, telepsych services to help give them direction because they still feel as though, you know, they don't have direction. And so whether that's, you know, through a medical evaluation or whatever the case is, you know, they're, they're working on that. And my understanding is they'll be reaching out to you to have those conversations as well. But I think there's a lot of organizations between yourselves and law enforcement and the hospital that all have a piece of it. And I think the idea is just trying to kind of hone in on... And I think the idea is just trying to kind of hone in on making this issue better or improved. And, you know, if there's 30 individuals that are titled in a month and only one of those remains, you know, that data also showed that the majority of those were released within the first 23 hours. Maybe 23-hour isn't the best avenue, but right now it seems like we don't really have an avenue. And so, you know, is it a mix of both options you have here? Perhaps so. I would say that it's hard for, at least my perspective, to give you any direction because I think there are other options with the hospital. There's other options with the state. We know that you can tweak the funding that comes from the state for different needs within the community. We've had those conversations, you know, and is, is the hospital better suited, obviously, medically in the event that those individuals need medical help? That was kind of the conversation we were having. So I think this is a great, you know, first step, and I, again, I, I don't want to be negative about it. I'm proud of it. I mean, I've sat through some very difficult meetings over the last couple of years, and I, I think you've come a very long way, and I'm very proud of that. And I, I hope that, rather than just dipping our toe in the water, we can continue to jump in. So, job well done.
Thank you. Commissioner West, can I just make one correction? And maybe I gave the wrong information. With those 30 evaluations of individuals that presented at the hospital in one day, they were evaluated for potential emergency detention. Only one of them were detained. So 29 individuals were turned away and trying to find community resources for them were very difficult, if not impossible at that point.
Mr., what was the timeframe on that?
I said it was a month, yeah, not a day.
So, thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, thank you all for coming over, and it's good to see your faces again. I'm sure you don't miss mine, but that's okay. And do up the good work. We'll be anxious to say.
I'm much friendlier.
With that, Commissioners, that concludes the regular business before us this morning. We do have a need to enter into an executive session to discuss real estate. It is anticipated we will be taking action upon coming out. With that, I'd entertain a motion, Commissioners. Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. We're now in executive.